Again, I respect him coming into the lion's den. Weston County is notoriously conservative. And JD came in and stood at the front of a room where he knew he was in the minority and took questions, which is better than I can say for others from that wing of the party. That's my problem. So you know, Chip not getting a chance to respond, hey, through no fault of our own or no fault of the Freedom Caucus, because the Freedom Caucus shows up, they've kind of had the stage to themselves. But for JD Williams to do something that, sorry, that you know Ogden wouldn't do, you know Liz Cheney wouldn't do, I mean, who he gets lumped in with. He came, he came right up and he saw people and he talked to people.
Okay, so Ted, do you want to do the pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just really do pray that you would help this hospital to be able to. Thank you for that. It's your name we pray. She was on, she has a meeting on the west coast, so she's going to try to be there as much as possible.
Oh, she told me to text her when we were going to start, so I don't know. Because she's at a thing, I thought maybe I would do it after the presentation, so she didn't have to be in for that part. Would that be okay?
Okay, so do we have any additions or changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I would like to add discussion of Chair, CEO, and Attorney meetings. I just don't know where to add that.
You could do that.
After the manner report, maybe?
Yeah, you could do it. That's where I think new.
After the manner, after.
Yeah, after the manner.
Nine B?
Nine B?
Yes.
Bingo.
What was the change I didn't get?
Um, I would like to add discussion of Chair, CEO, and Attorney meetings.
Anything else? And like Kathy and I talked about just a little bit ago, under the CEO report, we're going to add talking about what time we want to do the board training.
How long do you anticipate the board training will be?
It will be a, I would say, yeah, I think it depends on how you want to split it up. If we have a half day session, that's probably the way that would work best for you guys, is a half day. Unless you want a whole day one, that's up to you. Some people are fried, so.
Okay, so we're good with the agenda. So now.
Madam Chair, without, if there isn't any further additions, I will make a motion that we accept the agenda as amended.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, say. Okay, so now on to the minutes. Onto the minutes. Do we have, is it everybody? How, so everybody read the minutes and are they good? I can hold them up if you want. We can make changes. I'm good. She made those changes.
Yeah, I just gave her a couple too, and she's put them in there.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the minutes.
My second motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, say. Okay. Okay, good. Do we, um, do we have any visitor comments?
Usually they just chat away. I don't know.
I'm just being too.
I'll get the reason why. Can we check over to the side?
Okay, so now I believe we're ready for the anatomy.
Okay, so Greg, we're okay, we're ready for you. I introduced Anatomy IT. You've actually met them before they did the assessment for our IT. Systems basically and our compliance pieces. So with that, Greg, I'll let you your introductions with your team and move forward.
Chair, let me know when you can see my screen.
We can see it. Just unmute William.
Okay, great.
Right. There you go.
Great. Well, thanks Kathy and team. It was, it was not, I'm sorry I didn't get to meet you when I was on site last week Kathy, but I did have a good conversation with JT and Denise, so maybe next time around we'll get a chance to meet you. So again, thank you for letting us join you guys. What we wanted to do is kind of just recap. We presented to you in your last board, well, a board meeting back, I believe it was in July. And we showed you basically our offering of what Anatomy IT could do for your IT services. So I just kind of wanted to go through some introductions and then just do a recap of what we do. On the phone, we have Patrick Virginia, who is our Chief Commercial Officer. We have Bill Sintress, who's our Chief Product Officer. And my name is Greg Kidd. I am the Business Development Executive. So when we came back earlier on, when we guys were talking with you, we came and we filled out a health IT framework that we did. It was kind of an overview of your entire IT system. And we dug down, asked a lot of questions. We did that with Sam that was with H&amp;H. And he was able to provide the information and talk with your team. And then they funneled that information back to us. And what we came up with was a scorecard, which is what we call our health IT framework. We like to see everybody around the 91 is a target. You guys came in at 51, which is, is, is not, it's not terrible, but it's not great. And so I know that you guys know that there are some things that you need to address. Obviously, that's why we're talking today. Some of the things I'm going to list out, Bill is driving, so I'm going to list out the key observations and let him maybe add some, add some extra dialect and conversation on that. The first observation that we had was that the HIPAA compliance concerns. You guys have limited data encryption, lack of ongoing HIPAA training, and lack of up-to-date comprehensive IT security policies. There's no periodic HIPAA risk assessment or security audits. And it was inconsistent user access management and no designated security leadership. So one thing that we did in our proposal, which I'll show you, is a virtual CISO. So that you would have that, that you would have that, that security feature. And you could have access to one of our Chief Information Security Officers. Bill, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think you covered it Greg, and thank you everyone for the time today. I think our goal would be to make sure that we answer any questions you may have as a follow-up from our last call as well.
Okay. And on the second bullet, there's no evidence of IT business continuity or disaster recovery plans or testing in place. So that's something that's very important that you guys should be doing. And again, we, you know, we address that within our, within our proposal. The data backups are a second, there's, and secondary copies are stored at the same location on campus, which is, it's kind of not good to have those housed at the same location in case something happened. If there was a fire or a tornado or something like that, you'd want those backups to be in two separate areas. There was no formal security training and no evidence of security incident response plan or testing. So those are the things that we uncovered and we think those are the things that we can immediately address your needs on. So what we did is we put together, here's a snapshot of our services. And what we would do is 24/7 remote IT help desk support. I know that that would, we would take over the help desk and have a 24/7 remote hosting and support for you so that you could basically call and have access so that the person, the IT person on site right now wouldn't have to take all those calls. It would, it would give her an opportunity to work on certain projects within the hospital and let us take over the help desk support. Again, we do the 27, 24 by 7 network monitoring, your network management, your Microsoft 365 licensing, your Windows servers and workspaces patching, your vendor support assistance, your technology asset inventory, the endpoint deduction in response with our SOC services we've included. We would, we would do the security and awareness training and phishing testing that you need. And we do with the HIPAA security risk assessments. Now, there are some other things like multi-factor authentication, email security encryption that we could add on, the DNS layer security and security information add-ons. And again, we propose a virtual Chief Information Officer as well. So with that, it comes out to, for the managed IT and the security services, it's $16,684 a month. The first, you know, the first month price would be waived. And we also have the virtual CIO, which is $3,200 per month. We have a one-time fee of $35,640 that, for us to implement this. But down at the bottom, you see that those red asterisks, we're willing to either discount either the first two months of the managed services, or we can, we can discount the $35,640 as the implementation fee, because we are in the process of getting a USAC application. So we would offer up that discount of either the one-time fee or two months of the recurring services. So with that being said Kathy, I will get this over to you and present, so you could get it out to the team. Any questions on this, on this proposal?
Greg, I do have a question. I got lost in the numbers there just a little bit.
Okay.
What would be the total monthly cost?
The monthly cost would be $16,884. And then with the virtual CIO, it's an additional $3,200.
So $3,200 a month?
It would be 16,684 plus $3,200 per month.
Correct. Okay, okay.
And the $35,000 is just an implementation.
It's an implementation fee, uh huh. $640, which they said they're willing to waive while they're getting their.
USAC approval.
USAC approval. So we'll, we'll talk, USAC is basically a program that supports rural facilities with their network capabilities and those kinds of services. And you get some advantages from them because the government will pay you for getting basically where you need to be from a network sampling. So there's some additional dollars that come in with that. That's the short answer. And you actually will often gain additional money to help make sure you can keep it up.
So how long will it take to get this through?
How long, I mean, how long before we could start an implementation, I think is what you're asking.
Yes.
Right?
Well, no, we'll get their proof of USAC approval.
Oh, USAC, yeah. Greg, you.
I think that it takes right around a month, maybe. I think it would take possibly a month to two at the latest. And we're ready to get going with this right away. I mean, we're, you know, as far as implementation, we could start as soon as possible, as soon as you guys would want us to.
Now, what's, what is the virtual $3,200 a month? What's that do? What features that?
The CIO piece, that's the Chief Information Officer. Basically, they're responsible for making sure that you maintain the compliance that you're supposed to have for both the hardware and the compliance, basically relative to like HIPAA and those types of things. Make sure that we have all of our, we're doing quality assessments and look backs and some guidance to make sure that basically there's not access given that's not supposed to be that sort of thing for a business. So I'm giving real short answers. Do you want to give a better answer on that Patrick? Or how would you like to address that gentleman?
Yeah, Bill, do you want to take that one?
Yeah, absolutely. So thank you everyone. So yeah, the virtual CIO services are an extension of kind of the strategic planning and, you know, accountability of the actions that are being addressed from the framework, including everything you said, right? And making sure that the process and procedures are followed, making sure that the right onboarding and offboarding plans are in place for employees, access controls are in place, as well as support in case of an event, right? So any event that could happen, whether it's an outage or failure or a security event, that person would be available and that team would be available to support you in those cases.
And I also believe that we would work on, we would work on a roadmap for you for six, 12, and 18 months down the road too.
Yep, great point Greg. Yep, we would also, that person would be responsible for meeting with you on a, whatever cadence you're comfortable with, presenting the roadmap of additional technology improvements you want to make over time, implementing a asset lifecycle management plan, and then ensuring that lines up with your budgetary capabilities as well.
The other thing right now is that it takes us away from having a one-person control piece. We definitely need to have more, number one, Wendy needs to have more support because she does everything. And number two, that's not good compliance decision. It puts her in a bad position and it puts the organization to what's considered very risky. So, not that we don't trust Wendy, it's the appearances.
So is the CIO a dedicated one, I mean, would we have the same CIO at a time?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. You'd have a dedicated named CIO. I mentioned the team behind them, just in case somebody's on vacation, there's another CIO that could jump in if needed. But you would have a dedicated person.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Great. Greg, I did have one question. With the 24/7 remote, remote support staff, where, where on the globe do they work from?
Yep, so Greg, yeah, I could definitely address that. So we have a dominant level one and level two that is based in the US. We do leverage a dedicated offshore team for 24/7 coverage, which is really eight at night your time to six in the morning your time. And then they have access to the team for escalation. So what we do is we use them, we leverage them for 24/7 network monitoring and escalations as well as level one support. And then they would escalate to our onshore team if it's between those late hours in the evening. They would just take the first call. Yeah, correct. Sorry.
What's the language piece? Do you have any problems with that? I have to ask that question because you know, sometimes that can be a problem for people.
Yeah, no, that's a very fair question and something that we've actually invested a lot into. So we choose, we've chosen our partner based upon language skills. So we're able to get very strong English language. You'll certainly get somebody with an accent, but language and understanding wouldn't be an issue. And we also have the ability to record those calls. So if there was a, a, a bad interaction, we could go back to the recording, coach the team member, or take them off the account if we need to.
Could I ask a follow-up question Greg?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So you talked about, I think, tier one, tier two, tier three. And I thought you said all tier one requests are handled by the offshore team. Did I get that right?
Only overnight. Sorry, I should have been clear on that. So during the day, your tier one, tier two, and tier three are all US-based. Overnight, starting at that 8:00 PM hour, is when we leverage our offshore team to take that initial call, the level one call. Only between the hours of like eight and six in the morning, they have access to our onshore level two and level three team members if it's an issue that they can't resolve.
Hey, Bill, do you want to mention too anything about the pod structure as well, the support that's also behind, that's dedicated?
Yeah, for sure. So when we talk about our teams, especially the onshore teams, we've segregated them into pods. And so the pods are really focused around 12 team members in each pod with a small subset of customers. So when your team calls into our team, they're, during the day, during those daytime hours into the evening, they're getting one of 12 people. So over time, they're going to get used to the people that they're calling into. They're going to get to know them. Our team is going to know your team because all of those calls are focused to there. Now, certainly if something dramatic happened and all 12 were busy, we have a backup staff that can support them. It would roll into one of the other pods. But what we try to do is we make sure that your team is getting a consistent set of resources that are supporting them. It helps them so they know who they're calling into. It also helps our team to get to know your environment and they can answer calls quicker, because our goal is to really ensure that we resolve that call, the first call in. So there doesn't have to be an escalation or a callback. So that is one metric that we track. And we really try to empower our team to be able to do that.
And one other, one other question on that. Oh, sorry Patrick, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to add one other quick thing. The other thing is the pods are structured to where, you know, other critical access to rural-based hospitals that we serve are all, you know, together within this group of 12. So that we make sure, because you know, we provide IT services across all the different service delivery models in healthcare, from inventory surgical center, physician offices, to, you know, critical access hospitals. And part of the design and structure of the, of the pod delivery model that Bill just highlighted is focused in, around the types of healthcare services that you provide as well. So we have that knowledge and expertise and understanding, you know, your environment even better because of that.
Are you able to, is there a capability to escalate a problem? So if it's the middle of the night and it's a problem that the normal desktop person could solve, what do you do with that situation?
Yeah, for sure. So they, they have access to escalate to our onshore resources, our level two and level three. You would also have access to escalate to our leadership team and at any time of day. So there'd be two paths for you to escalate. For some reason, the person on the call is not escalating it appropriately, you would have access to be able to escalate to our leadership team as well.
Okay.
We hope that doesn't have to happen because our processes are set that it should escalate if it's not being resolved in 20 to 30 minutes. But if for some reason it didn't, you'd always have the backup to be able to call us.
Okay. I just like to know that because sometimes you do get stuck with, you know, you have a help desk support person and you have a little bit deeper problem than what they can solve.
Absolutely, for sure, yeah.
Hey Bill, maybe it might help to highlight if we see anything suspiciously happening from a security perspective, how we handle that in this, in this structure might be good to.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, so we have a network operations team that looks closely at the environment. So we're doing that 24/7 monitoring. You also have the ability to add, you know, additional security measures. But one that is included in this, which we believe is very important for all environments, is this endpoint detection and response with SOC services. So that's included in this proposal. And what that allows is it's a bidirectional kind of interaction. If something is noticed in the environment, this EDR, the endpoint detection and response system, will highlight it to our security operations center. That security operations center will immediately connect with our team of escalation experts. And then they would be pulled into the incident and they would help manage the incident immediately without your interaction. Now, certainly we would then reach out to you and say, hey, we have awareness of an issue going on with this workstation in this building. We've shut it down. Here's the action that we're taking. But by having those connected, our SOC and our network operations center, it allows us to do that much quicker. So if we do have to close access for something that got compromised, that team could work with speed any hour of the day.
Great, thanks.
Yep.
Greg, I think the, I think we've spoken with your team once before, right?
Yes, sir.
And I think you made a recommendation at the end of that call that you thought we should have a HIPAA risk analysis done. Am I, just wanted to know if, to your knowledge, was that part of the preliminary work that your team did? I think you mentioned doing some work with Sam, doing some review of our system.
Yeah, so there's two components, right? Just so we're clarifying them correctly for you. There was the assessment that we did, which is the health IT framework. It's a very comprehensive analysis of your IT maturity and we can reshare that document if you don't have it. We'll make sure to resend it after this. That gives you a kind of the macro view. From a HIPAA perspective, there is a specific task called the security risk analysis. That is something that is done yearly for all healthcare, all healthcare providers. You should be doing that. And then part of what we're proposing here is that you do that before the end of the year. But we, we haven't done that yet. We, we obviously have a lot of knowledge to start filling it out because of the framework. So it won't take a lot to get that done. But one of our recommendations absolutely was to get that done, regardless of how you move forward. I think there were two recommendations last time that we felt you probably wanted to work with urgency on. One was the SRA, so the security risk analysis. And one was the data off-site backups, because I think you had those manually off-site backed up. So making sure that that was happening in separate buildings, separate locations. So I don't know if that was, that was taken care of, but that would be something we'd have our radar on.
Yeah, those have an additional cost related to them, I would assume, correct?
Yeah, depending on what you have in place and what design you go for going forward. There's certainly, you do have a backup system in place that, that does backups, but doesn't do native air gap backup. So you could either do that online or continue to do it manual. But if you're doing it manual, you'll want to have a recorded checklist of that being done. So it's a trackable event. Right now, I think it's being done more ad hoc. So there's ways to do it lower cost, certainly could do those. Or there's ways to automate that and take it off-site with an air gap in the cloud. But we can help advise you on either of those.
And we added that the HIPAA security risk assessment is in the proposal. So that's, that's within the services.
Okay, thank you. And I think we said, you know, roughly 20,000 per month. And that there's some rebates of some sort that we discussed.
With the USAC they were talking about.
Right. So is the 20,000 including the rebates?
It's, yeah, that would be gross of the rebate. So we have it included, the rebates in. So there's two, there's a few things with the rebates that you have to go through. One, your service provider has to be a known and registered service provider, which we will do. But then the application of it, which we can help you do, needs to be done by the healthcare provider to get the approvals for it. So you would basically get a rebate back on the funding that you spend. So let's say you spend 20 and they give you a rebate. I don't know what the number would be, but let's say it's $2,000. They would issue that back to you.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you very much for your time gentlemen. Good job of getting us, giving us a lot of information.
Absolutely. Can you see, I just wanted to see the reference, can you see the references?
Yes.
These are Fox Butte, which is in Alliance, Nebraska. Fall River, which is right near Alliance. I think they're closer to you in Sandy, Sandy Springs, I believe. And then you have Phillip.
And then you have Phillip Healthcare System, which is in South Dakota. So I've included these so that you can contact them. They all use us. Fox Butte is more so would be more comparable to you with the services that they're using. So Mandy would be happy to talk to you as well as Dustin and I guess you guys know Maureen. She used to be the CEO at 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 Weston. So so I'll get this, I'll get this over to you and we really appreciate your time. And again, if there's any questions, Kathy, I'll get this over to you and you can share it with the group. But please feel free to reach out to us and we thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. And that report that you had, would you go ahead and send that because I haven't located that?
Absolutely.
I got a note to send that to you. Yep.
Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you all again. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Thank you. You'll make sure Patrick should come over.
His dad's been hospitalized. Never matter. I know I would. I know. I know the dogs out there.
That's good.
Or one person show.
Wendy. She left. I'm assuming she saw.
That might be a little excessive.
I had to come home last night. Over at South Dakota, and I thought deer on four pair of teeth was bad until I went to Hell's Canyon and stuff last night. Oh, it was terrible. I'm glad I didn't have to drive. I couldn't do it. It wasn't supposed to be.
I think you had a birthday, didn't you?
Yeah, they had.
Happy birthday, Ted.
The the nice thing about those deer is they seem to be staying on the side. The nice thing about those deer is they seem to be staying on the side.
Well, if they don't, they're in the middle.
There are smokes too. One with her car and one with the pickup. Coming to your house.
There it is. I didn't see it. I didn't see it. It's okay. I have a bad back too.
So Denise, I saw you. And are you gonna?
Did you send it to me?
I did. Thank you.
I like the pen.
Do we have to report this?
And I have no idea.
Is it under $350?
I assure you that it is. Three hundred three dollars.
I do like that.
And the little pads, we do it. CNN was kind of steel.
Okay, so I'd like to introduce to you Rich. Rich is here from the company Elevate. And we're getting his stuff put put up on SharePoint here.
I guess that's a question for the audience.
Let me see. Your screen sharing. So where's the PowerPoint though? There it is. I I can see it. Can you guys see it?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
So thanks, Rich. Rich Kennedys.
Yeah, go ahead and listen to us. Sorry.
Well, hello, Rich Kennedy with Elevate Services Group. I belong chief revenue officer and one of the two operating owners of Elevate. And I've known Kathy for a bit. She was with our one of our first hospitals years ago. So thank you for having today. And there's a lot of folks I didn't know. So I, just so you know, I'd love to, if anybody I've got my card in there, but please feel free to just let's talk. I don't want to talk too much. So if there's something that you say, stop, please do. So what we're going to do today is I'm going to walk you through what we call the Elevate Way, kind of how we see the world. So you can understand where we're coming from. And I think that's kind of important when you're going to becoming a partner and engaging. Then what I call is a quick day in the life, we're going to just really quick talk about some of the things that our our clients experience with us and we just talk about some of the tools that we use. This was, I was told us do not get too techie. So I'm really going to keep it not technical. So the goal is just to kind of highlight. And then from there, we'll talk about our service offerings and how we bring it, bring our services to our healthcare clients. Needs and costs, and then questions. So far, so good. Okay. The Elevate Way. And I guess if I'm in the way. Okay.
We've got these packages.
Yes, you do. So perfect. So way we start, and I like to kind of set the stage is we want to think of the world kind of as the IT universe and how we're going to address it. In the IT universe, it doesn't matter if you're five people, 50,000 person company, it's the same universe. It's just how are you going to address it? So we kind of want to frame IT as we see it so that you can understand how we address it for our clients. So when most folks think of IT, they think of
Do you want me to do those for you?
Oh, no, it's okay.
It's okay.
The first thing they'll think of is, you know, user support, help desk, take care of folks. Then we start thinking about the operating environment. Is it, it needs to be administered? Is it in the cloud? Is it legacy? And then we start thinking about projects. That's what most managed services providers are going to talk to you about. And there's still more to it, but that's what we think of when we think of kind of core IT services. And that's the techie stuff. But now we're going to move into that software world. EMR in this case, and how's it engaging with the operating environment? The vendors and who you're working with. Epic, I understand is who you work with, but if there's, and there's other vendors and other software and hardware vendors that need to be engaged with. And then strategy and planning. Are we in alignments? What's the roadmap? How much are we going to spend? Is there digital transformation going on? And then finally, policies and practices, security, compliance. Are we in standards? Are we in alignment with what we think are great standards? Five people, 50 people, 50,000. That's the IT universe. Doesn't matter. Now, today you say, how do we address that? Equal process and technology. We bring what we call the IT function. If it's, if your IT has a first name, it's not a function. It's a person. We want to bring an IT function that covers the entire universe and integrates so that it is all connected. And when we come into our clients, especially our healthcare clients, we are usually wrapping around what is there. We see three types of hospitals that we've worked with. Those that have an IT leader, those that have IT staff, and those that have neither. So we have to wrap around what they have and make sure we're utilizing the IT assets and resources that they have in the best way possible while addressing all of those, the entire universe. So.
Can I ask?
Sure.
No. So right now, we kind of have a Wendy centric.
Yes, you do.
Where would, where does Wendy fit in this?
I would say in talking to Wendy, she is right now spending a lot of time on the bottom half and getting to by bottom half. Operating environment, the user support, projects, some projects, probably not as much as you like. I think she is scratching the surface on the strategy and compliance. And this is talking to her, not that this is about our capabilities. This is what does she have time to do? So and a great example is actually her last hospital, they had Gabe. And Gabe spent all his time down in this area. We came in and we took over a lot of the user support. We did projects. Gabe now has elevated, no pun intended, to he's another CTO. So Gabe is having conversations with the EMR vendor, data analytics folks. He's working on budgets. He's working on new technologies and how they, those projects can be done. So where Wendy is today, I say, is down kind of on the bottom side. I see her capabilities. She does have leader capabilities. She really does. She's, I'm going to let her compare to Gabe.
Absolutely.
So she does have that capability. The key is being able to get her doing the things that make sense. And when you're in that support group and that administration area, you never get to think bigger and the projects never get done. I don't want to know about here, but I'm guessing from what we saw. We started at the other hospital, I think there were 50 projects were in waiting. Some were six to 12 months. Just to get to it. So I don't know if that answers your question. It did. Thanks. So when we talk about our platform, this is Elevate. We bring people wise, folks like me, executive sponsor, but we also are going to bring what we call a client advisor and a strategic services director. This is like an IT director, senior person. We now have, he starts on November 4th. We're bringing in new, very healthcare centric. We had other folks that worked in healthcare. We've grown so much that we actually have a person who is managing 100 bed hospital. And he spent 12 years in the healthcare IT hospital arena. He currently works for one of our partners. And we hired him full time and he is going to be exclusive to just the hospital clients. That's what he does. He understands all the systems. He has background in Cerner, he has background in Epic. He understands the environment. And so it's just, it's a demand thing for us. We've had others that are there, but we like, we really need to step it up because we just have more and more to do. And the client advisors are also healthcare centric because it relates to you. We have a B2B side. Our healthcare side has gone from if we're going to about 60% a year for the last four years. So the other stuff I'm going to pop through really quick, but tons of tools. Okay, healthcare centric tools that we use to manage our clients and process. And you're seeing those, those are kind of high level, just how we look at the Elevate platform. This is, I want to show you here a forced distinct elements of what we bring. We call it the Elevate Connect Portal. This would be something that is yours, meaning it is, it is client facing, it's for the client, it's not our tool, it's yours. And it's how you engage, you bring the hospital with your staff, with your partners. There's, it's a, it's a, think of it as something you wouldn't buy on your own. So it's a system that we see at like larger, larger hospitals, system hospitals. This is what we do. You need, and you want to add a user, you click a button, it asks you all the details that you need to know about that user. So you don't miss anything. And it automatically routes it to the right people. You want to remove a user, same sort of thing. You want to buy a piece of equipment. And it's got a self-serving portal for, I said clients, but users, so that their experience is better. But it's very tuned to each hospital and how they want to use it. Documentation management system. This is something we see in all the folks, all the hospitals we've started with. Documentation is everywhere and half of it's in here, probably in Wendy's head. We need to get it out of Wendy's head and out of everywhere else into one place, single source of truth that integrates with all the tools that we have, like our help desk tools. So when help desk technicians need something, there it is. It's in the system. So again, we're trying to bring that IT function. Metrics, dashboards, we're looking at everything, which I think you probably do here too, right? How's it going? I mean, for your serving your client, your patients, how's it going? How are we doing? Where do we need to improve? And this is stuff that's not just to us, it's to you. You see this. Wendy would be very active in it. Executives would get, however you want to use it. We want to show you, not just tell you, show you how things are going.
What are some examples of that dashboard?
How many tickets per month per endpoint? We set standards on what is good. And if we're seeing too many tickets per endpoint, that shows us noise and we got to go find where that noise is and bring those numbers down. Meantime response to problems. How fast are we getting to those tickets? What kind of turnaround time? Flexity of those tickets. Where are they? Are they things that we can control? Are there user training issues? So we're looking at all of those different metrics and where the problems are happening, happening. And we're going and attacking that noise. Our strategic services director, that's his imperative, that's his mission. In this case, it's a he. Bring the noise down. And that's what gets Wendy doing other things. She's not worried about the noise. We worry about the noise. And she with our help, help, we get the together, we bring it down, but we want that to be our ownership, not just hers and not hers. That makes sense. And our help desk is seven by 24, 365. If a nurse at 2am needs something, pick up the phone, we're answering it.
So who, is it overseas that answers?
Nope, can't be because HIPAA. Has to be here. So it is a partner of ours. We have them. And they actually, we have some of our own employees working with them. So it is very integrated with our called regular help desk. And actually, a lot of the same people are doing tier two support. So our folks are doing tier two, they're tier one, but they actually were, we're to the point with a number of hospitals that we will have a PA that is just healthcare center, hospital center, kind of like healthcare, hospital center. So the same problems, and that's how we kind of bring the noise down. Is we have people that are solving the problems that are seeing them all the time and go, oh, that's a solution we can bring over here. Does that make sense? The last one is we have a HIPAA portal that comes with a coach that will help you through that entire process. And we're going to track everything inside of it. It's its own separate system. Lots of details. Whoever's the compliance officer, there's hours of discussion to have. Sorry, whoever that is. So but yes, our our process is that, and and we bring a coach and actually we have legal representation through that same, that same service if needed. But really, it's all about having a coach. Okay. Services, how we package ourselves and what we bring to the client. The first is what we call our managed service. Talked about the strategic services director. We also have a CTO.
Would you tell them what a CTO is?
Sure. Chief Technology Officer. So think of the strategic services director as your day to day IT director. CTO is out there looking at new technologies, managing what we do in regards to the technologies that we have and being that kind of technical lead across all technologies.
Thank you.
Oops, I don't know where to go.
Zoom. And then you want to go over and help. Screen sharing.
Am I closing?
I don't think you did. I think something.
Okay, well, you know, we can work off of what you got. How's that?
You want me to?
You want it here?
If you can, that's great. So not a problem if you don't. So, if you can, it's not a problem if you don't. Just because I know it's getting late, people are getting hungry, although I've had some food. Okay. Well, on the services, you're looking at that. The first one, this is how we break out our services. The first one is they say elevate, elevate way managed services. Strategic Services Director, CTO, our service desk, seven by 24, 365, US-based pod system has to be for HIPAA. And then some of the tools that you saw, that's part, and we have monitoring tools, management tools, all sorts of technology tools, as well as just taking care of the day-to-day. Then we have. Keep going. It's the next one. Thank you. So.
We just thought we could challenge you today.
Yeah, well, it's not the first time. No worries. Then our professional services, this is, we have three types of engineers. Really four types of engineers and technical talent that we're bringing to the table. Tier one is onsite if you need it. We've talked, I don't think you do to start. We place folks, we actually just placed someone in East Colorado. Population four now five because of the person we just placed. We want people in, we want people here. We don't want to take care of you from there. If you need someone here, we have an entire recruiting group that goes out and finds folks. We're looking usually for onsite, not like Wendy, but more kind of more lower level folks. If we need more hands, young folks that we've taken folks that want. We had a police officer that was very technical. He wanted to become an IT person. He felt his career was going to be better. So we drained him up and that's what he's doing. So tier one is onsite. Tier two are special, like application centric, data centric, more. Could be onsite, but more, more than likely remote. So that could be specific to whatever need you have. We have, one of our clients has EMR consulting, SRA stuff, we'll do that for clients. That'll come from our tier two resources. Tier three, big brain guys. Those, those are the ones that really understand how things work. Those are the ones that are doing the big projects, tons of experience, anywhere from, you know, 10, 15 to 20. So those are the tier three. And then we have an entire security group that does security related component, has security related activities. And when we talk security, it's IT security. Okay. So the this and that. And we're going to watch everything all the time. And then we also have a group that does biomet security on all the biomet devices. So think of the imaging machines, blood pulse monitor, all of that stuff that connects into the network is on the network. So it needs to be protected. It needs to be managed and, and we'll call it watched. If things get out of, what usually happens on the biomet is they get out of sync with the manufacturer, firmware. Get a little tech, but the firmware is not up to date, therefore it's not protected and that's where holes start to happen. So we're watching and scanning it all the time going, that needs to be updated. We're in the process and so you know, on the biomet, if you've heard of Trimedics, they're our partner. And they're, they usually deal with big systems, but they have a small group called Vigilor, which is like a brand, will be a company that is focusing on independent role. That's what they want to do. That's their focus just on cybersecurity. And we're their first partner in the US. So we're the first resale partner. The two companies that we use on this, we're actually bringing them together so that they're going to be one solution. It's called Elevate Healthcare Security Cloud. Can be sold as a separate offering if that's all anybody wants. And what we do is we remediate when there's something that comes up. Something bad happened, we engage. And that's what those engineers are about. Tech solutions, this is all the stuff you buy. You know, this is all the, it could be Microsoft and all that stuff. We help you provide that. And there's a lot of tech, like I just talked about, there's systems and services and subscriptions and all that tech stuff that you buy, we provide. And then this is part that we'll go into at length, and I'm going to show you how this works out. We also are a service provider for USAC. It took a little bit to become that because they basically looked into everything that we as a company did. Everything that I do, make sure that I'm not some kind of somebody. So I had to go through background checks and all that other stuff. So any owner of the company, so they go through all of those different dynamics. And then they have to place you as it relates to what you do and what you can do inside of USAC. So we started the process three years ago. Took us about a year to truly get it done. And I can tell you, USAC is one of the most difficult folks to deal with. I don't mean to, it's just they are. So the FCC is where the money's coming from. USAC is administering it. So when you do, to understand where it comes from. When you pay your telecom bills for your circuits, heck, your phones, your cell phone, you'll see FCC, those junk fees. All that money goes to the FCC. Then they use USAC to parcel it out. So it's not approached, it's not appropriated by Congress. It's a, it's a, it's a tax. It's a fee. So USAC is the one that manages that. So that means they have to manage us. So we got our service provider indexed. And what we have, what we learned as we did this, is there are two parts to USAC. One part is for circuits that the entire world knows about and can take advantage of. Banner Health can take advantage of it. If they have a facility in a considered rural area that qualifies, USAC will fund that. They'll give Banner a check for the difference between what it costs them to get the circuit versus what it would cost like in a major metropolitan area. That part, everybody thinks about. And that part is administered by USAC brokers, agents, for-profit folks. And it's a very established business. You have one today that's doing this, a for-profit agent. They also have another part called the Health Connect Fund for folks like you and others. Nonprofit, certain size, certain location. If you qualify for that, you get not only the circuits, but you also get all of our services paid for. Most of ours, like three core, well, in this experience, 80% of our services are paid for. The only thing that's not paid for is the Microsoft stuff, is this. So that part has a whole nother layer you have to go through, which is you have to be partnered in a consortium of like hospitals, like you. CHA, Colorado Hospital Association, who's our client and brought us into all this. They have an independent consortium that you would, it's costs nothing. You sign up, Kathy has to pay for it. You're not part of the consortium. So that consortium is a whole separate group in USAC. They look at that consortium as the entity, not the hospital. The consortium, hospitals are down here. So everything's managed through the consortium. And if you do it this, this way, it's all covered. That's what took us in understanding it and then how to package it in such a way. We don't make it hard for them. We make it really easy for them. If you make it complex, they will say, I don't understand. I'm not going to find a solution for that. But then you just back and forth and back. But the consortium is who battles USAC, not the hospital. If that makes sense. So if your circuits, you had a problem with the circuits today, it's this, your, your agent would basically say, it's not, it's not, USAC's looking at you as the entity. So you're battling, even though your agent's helping you. This whole consort. So I know it's kind of complicated, but it's complicated. And that's what takes the effort of what we. In addition, so that's USAC. We also have a partnership with Eastern Plains Healthcare Consortium, guy that used to be in it. Which is 15 hospitals along Eastern Plains of Colorado. They now have affiliate memberships and they're bringing in hospitals in Nebraska. She has something to look at if she'd like to. And that group has a purchasing agreement with us that gives rebates, fees and other things marketed to back to the hospitals. That group also is building for them. Community connect where we're going to connect all like-minded and needy groups within hospitals. CEOs will have literally their own forums to talk to each other about. CNOs, imaging groups, CFOs, a way for people to connect and communicate. I have a problem, help me. Has anybody run into this before? Actually getting to the point, which not as can affect you as much because of where you're at, but is there ways to share? You know, in the Eastern Plains, they want to move patients around. Don't send them to Denver. Send them to, we have a patient in Holyoke. Does he have to go to Denver? Is there someone on the other hospital that can actually service them, take care of them? They're trying to find ways so that they can capture more and keep their patients. Whole initiative around that. And then finally, Granton, this is the one that we've learned over the last couple of years. Each individual hospital, I don't know who does grants, if you're focusing grants here. Some have, they focus on different areas. They find things. We had one hospital that found $400,000 worth of grant money to do telehealth. If we could have bundled, this was before we started doing this, everybody else qualified too. We just needed to coordinate it. So we're coordinating grants and grant sharing so that we can actually get more money back to the hospitals. If we see something applies to one, we can get it, apply it to the others as well and make sure they're communicating. So we're kind of connected all the grant engines in the hospitals to keep their eyes out, rise open. And then when they see something, telehealth is one that's been a lot out there. We help them write the grants so that they get the money they need because we know what the grant folks want to see when it comes to the technology. Okay, fees. This is what we walked through for this hospital. This is high level. Onboarding fee, one-time bill, our monthly fee for managed services, that's the range of the hospitals we're in with right now. You're probably right in the middle. That's why we actually do an example, price is about right around the middle. And then it's pretty static because you guys don't change significantly. You don't add hundreds of users overnight. So it'll be pretty static, but if it does, if you did say add a clinic or something, we might adjust that. Professional services. Whatever you need. I mean, if we have tier one, tier two, tier three, we bundle those in, all those, and again, those will all be USAC eligible. So if we have onsite, you tend to leave, those tend to be the cost for onsite tier ones. Tier two, no, we think tier three, just looking at your infrastructure that we've signed. We really spent a little bit of time with Wendy. You're probably in the middle of that range too, of height in engineering, you're going to need on a monthly basis to mitigate tech debt, which is kind of grown. As well do small projects. What we find is all those, that list of 50 projects that she's got, 30 of them aren't huge. She just can't get to them. We get folks doing those and put her on the projects that make sense for her. Get that happening and we get USAC to fund it because it's part of the initiative that we're putting together. And then lots of technology solutions that we're going to bring, but these are the prices that we gave Kathy. I think the next one is better. We'll look at these. This is an example. So this is what it would look like if we were to go forward. I made the assumption of tier one or two. So let's just assume we had a 40,000 monthly cost, which is managed services professional. And those two technology solutions, those are variable. You're probably paying the five right now. I'm pretty sure you are. The tech solutions on the device side, which is the security stuff, you're not doing all that. We would probably recommend that you do. That's about what all of our other hospitals, we have some hospitals, 30, around 30, we have a couple of 60. You're right, kind of in the middle. So let's see how this works with USAC. This is a structure. 65%, you do have a fee to the consortium. They take a fee for what they do. Which results in the whole reimbursement to be about 50% of the spend. So let's do numbers. Oh, and then the last thing. It's the person, this is not every dollar is eligible. We maximize a lot by bundling things together. So we'll say all these services are under one bundled network security number. USAC is great. They don't care. We just net security. This is the amount. If we line item, USAC will look at it and go, what is that? What is that? What is that? And we're answering thousands. No, keep it simple. We're talking very low level folks that are trying to read IT invoices that don't even know what 90% of the words are in the invoice. So the way that it works is that once this is, they, they refund the request or you make a funnier request, once they fund it, we send invoices, you pay invoices, we tell USAC the invoice is paid. Okay. So it's uploading the system, it's paid. USAC sends money to us, we write you a check back. That's how it works. You could take it as credits or every CFO has said, nope. My number's on the top above line, my number's above line. So we end up writing quarterly checks for the one hospital that's a little bigger than you. We write a quarterly check of about $110,000 per quarter. So for you, of this 40, 35 would probably be eligible in this example. You would get a check for $22,750 that comes to us every month. Well, we do it quarterly, but that's the reimbursement. You'd have to pay the fee to the consortium. That's the net that you, financial, but you're going to get a check for $22,750 from Elevate.
The new store, this is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootleggers liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing. The coffee shop, certain Friday mornings, there's 30 people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their donuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
That's the net that you, financial, but you're going to get a check for $22,750 from Elevate. So your net after all of this is that you're roughly about, like I say, because of the personal stuff. You spent 40 with us, the net's going to be around 20. After the USAC funding. Does that make sense? I explain it sometimes. I don't even understand it, but I don't want to ruin it. The other thing we do, is let's say we do the $40,000 level, we would ask USAC for 60. We're going to ask for more than you need to pay because you might change, you might add things like the tier one. We might decide down the road, we need another person or something else. You could always ask them for more. You can give, you can submit less, you can't submit more. So that's why we always ask for more. And that gives us flexibility if certain projects come in, we can bundle the projects into the monthly fees. Does that make sense? Okay. I know sometimes like, wait, why do you ask for more? You can always, like I say, they will prove a certain level, whatever level they approve is what you can get. You can, you can put in a request for reimbursement for less, you just can't do it from, so we always ask for more. Timeline, this is really important. So the funding year goes from July 1 through June 30. So you're in the 24, 25 year, you've missed that year. Your next year is next June. Okay? So, working backwards, you have to have everything in by 4-1 to qualify for the 7-1 funding year. There's a whole process that has to happen where they take the funding request that has to go out to bid. There's all sorts of stuff. We can, anyone wants to go through that in detail, we can. Kind of say 12-30 is one. It's when you've really got to have all the ducks in a row so that you're ready to go through the process. It's like a, at least a 60-day process before you get to this 4-1. Because what happens is consortium puts everything out to bid. And whether they're bidders or not, you should choose what you want to choose, but you have to go through their process. There's a whole bidding process they have to go through. So once you do that, funds are received by fall. We are getting the funding requests for last year. The funding, get thumbs up now for last year. So I'll say we get one today in November. We input all the invoices that went from July through today. They go, cool, write us a check. It's about a month term. So usually we get the first check for the funding year by the end. So we talked November, December. So our first check for the last hospital we worked on, we got the $100,000 for the first quarter in November of that funding year. But after that, it just rolls every quarter. Does that make sense? The other part, there's two parts to USAC where you can get money. The one is for the managed services. They also fund one-time projects. So let's say we need a new network, something of size. And there's a big one-time purchase. It's the same process that you have to go through for the managed services. But the only issue with that, is you get more money back on one-time projects. But this is where that 12-31 is really important because you have to nail down by the end of the year, I want a new XYZ. And that goes out to bid, but you got to nail it down. So you got to have that roadmap built by the end of the year. So you can hit the deadlines going forward. So you can hit the deadlines going forward. For the hospitals that we had, so the hospital that we talked about that we got four hundred thousand reimbursement. We asked for about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of one-time projects. So it's, and we know how to package that. So that the one-time project could be a new phone system, a new this, that we would package it all into one big network project. Simple for USAC. Okay, does that make sense? And so, and then the last, I have another page in there that just shows our engagement process. Questions? I know I drew a lot out here. It's late too, so I apologize for all that, but it's mind-numbing. My, my mind's. It took us, we started was it twenty-two into twenty-one? They're now full swing. But it took us a couple of years to get it all really figured out. So now we have all the other hospitals on it. We have three candidate hospitals, you've been one of them, that we're talking to today, that we're trying to get into this funding cycle. EPHC did a group purchase agreement for the other eight of them. Hospital makes their own decision on that, so that's, that's different. CHA, we, as I said, we're their only premier partner, Colorado Hospital Association for IT Services. They've got us talking to not for this year, but now another by half dozen. And then Nebraska, your hospital association has contacted us. We haven't, we've kind of had forays to yours, but it just, I just haven't had to tell you, I mean, it's mostly me. It's where we're going, we are backed. One of our investors used to be the president of CHA. So he is very in tune to what we're doing. And this is our, this is where we literally are rebranding, I say rebranding. Our website right now, if you were to go to it, it shows Elevate Services Group. Within the next three to four months, it's going Elevate IT Health is going to be our main brand. We still will have the other B two B stuff, but we are all in on that front. We are in the process of putting Elevate Healthcare Security Cloud together. And that will be its own separate solution for those that are interested. They don't even have to do everything else, they can just do that for the hospitals that say, don't want the rest of it. And the last thing on that is the state of Colorado is trying to fund that for all of rural Colorado, so we can get that together.
So I do have one question.
Sure.
If we wanted to move ahead, so the qualification date is twelve thirty-one, and we're we're seventeen.
Yeah.
Is there enough time?
There is here. Kathy has a form, she has the form, that won't take long. So you, you already, you're already in USAC world, so that's good. And I think all of your locations are in USAC world, so that's good. You're just gonna take your current relationship with your for-profit broker and move it into the consortium, it costs you nothing. You only pay if you get reimbursed, so there's no fees to that.
So is that a one-time qualification?
Yep.
With USAC?
Okay, that's for getting Weston in the consortium, step one. Step two is going to get us engaged with Wendy. And spend basically the next sixty days or this one. And we are going to outline all those one-time projects. So that we can get that process started, so we can submit a request for the one-time projects. And we are really aggressive, we ask for everything. Will we do the whole thing if we have to? I mean, I, this is what we did for all the rest, that's why these first pieces are so important. Because these are big projects, and you don't have to do them. We, we write up the projects that are literally funding dependent, USAC, give us the money, we'll do this project. That's the one that's gotta kind of hit by twelve thirty-one, because what we give to you, what we put together. The consortium goes out and says, bid world on this project. No one bids. It's too much, there's too many pieces that they can't bid to. It has to sit out there for like thirty to forty-five days, it come, then USAC goes, okay, you're good to go, give us the funding request. And that funding request is delivered, the formal, we want to do a project of this, 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 this. And then the consortium uploads all that into USAC, these are all the projects. That happens in the February. Managed services part, same thing, goes through the same process, but that one, you don't have as much upfront work to do, if that makes sense. But what we would want to do in the next sixty days is the, I gave you an example, and I don't really, frankly, I don't think it's much different. When we dig in, if we see things that, you know, and we're gonna ask a lot of questions, if we see some, well, let's, we can put that into the funding request. Or maybe we don't know about something, so we really want to fine-tune that part in the next sixty days. Did that?
It, yeah. And one more question.
Sure.
Does your team have the capability of doing a HIPAA security risk analysis?
We do it for all the hospitals right now. Actually, the guy, the person that we hired was doing those for us. And now he's our employee, starting November fourth. So we had SRAs for all the hospitals, and that's just part of that. And we package all that into the managed services. I gotta imagine, this, you've listened to IT for what, an hour and a half now? I don't know how you're doing, but other than to say we would really, really love to have you be part of our, partner with you. And this, I know you're talking to the folks, and I understand, you know, we are focused on becoming we are focused on, this is what we want to be. This is who we're gonna be, not what we want to be, this is who we're going to be. So we are making great strides and it's moving very quickly. Hopefully that, like I say, and any questions, you've got my card, we'd love to answer any questions. And the other thing, I'll offer up to Wendy, which we'll do. And if you want to talk to any of the CEOs, we'll I believe me, they will all, I think they'd love to, if you want to talk to the EPHC CEO, he would love to talk to you too. I know he really wants to talk to you, he wants to connect with you. But any references you want, we will get those for you. And we're ready to rock and roll.
Is Kevin still the lead of EPHC?
They hired their Zach day ago. Is their, they literally, because they were, they are becoming very aggressive, they want to bring as many hospitals in. I say that in that they're, they're pushing the envelope, so they hired their own, Kevin was the chairman of the board.
Right.
They hired a C P S, Zach's now the CEO, he's on, he's their, one of, I guess, two employees.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time, thank you for coming.
Do you need me, I'm around, but I shouldn't be asking you to talk about it.
Yeah, we've got more to talk about, so I'll touch up with you.
Yes.
Okay, if you want to eat food before you leave.
Oh, no, that's okay, I had, I got some on my way in, so thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Thanks for coming from Denver.
Oh, it was a great trip. It really isn't that bad. Never a great trip. If I were to go home on Saturday, I think we're getting weather down. Comparatively, it was, it was good, better than what it could have been. I'm all over the country. This is better than, well, Gosa Springs is pretty nice going through the Rockies, Aspen Vale, pretty nice. Eats, I'd rather come here.
Thank you very much.
So could we reshuffle the agenda? Just because we're almost seven o'clock.
Yeah, do you want to reshuffle?
Just move the interviews up to basically be
Like, I can make a suggestion, but it's totally up to you. We really, really need to go through at some point, but not right away, the employee benefits piece, because that's time-sensitive. We could defer quality, I think, right? We don't have any credentialing files, so we could defer it to the next meeting and just report on a couple of months' worth of the quality meeting.
If we don't have any credentials.
No, no credentialing, so, I mean, we just would report to months' worth. I don't think that's a big deal. Our quality's in good shape, and So that would take that, and, I mean, truthfully, we could even delay the manner report if we wanted to.
And they are all in your sharepoint.
Yeah, I'd say let's just keep, let's keep keep going, and the thing is, I was hoping that all of the candidates would be here for the whole meeting anyway, so it doesn't hurt for
Okay, you want to come sit down, you're welcome to come sit down, or you want to stand, it's up to you.
There are times at charm.
But, but maybe. Yeah. Okay, so do you need, do you need, what do you need from us with this Anatomy of Elevate?
Well, we, I'd like to have you have a vote to approve one of the companies. I do have a preference, but a recommendation, which my recommendation is because I have a lot of familiarity with the Elevate Group. I've done a lot of work with them, they've grown a lot in the time that they've been there, and have been very successful at it. The other thing is, is that you, that Anatomy called me and was really trying to dig for the numbers that we were gonna get for it from the other vendor, which I wouldn't give them. And then they had said, what are some differences, or is there any differences between us? So I did mention the USAC, so they added that on real quick. I don't personally believe they can get that done in one to two months. That's what I believe, and this other company can have it, because they already do have it in place. So for me, I don't think we can afford to wait for the company to get up and running with USAC. Cause that just gives us that many months that we're not gonna be able to work towards getting those reimbursement pieces.
So, I have a question.
Sure.
So Rich told us that they can't have a call center outside of the US for HIPAA.
Yeah.
So somebody's wrong.
Yeah, someone's wrong.
Do you have any idea who is?
I don't know who's right on that one, that's a news to me, but I will tell you that Rich, his company works with very reputable companies, including Colorado Hospital Association. That's kind of how they got to start, they started, our, the hospital I was at before, we were their first rural hospital. And they've now since then grown to being part of every hospital in the Eastern Plains Health Consortium. And they do a great job with it, so you have to call their references, just so you're not just listening to me, but if you wanted to, but that's my, my strong opinion.
How big do you estimate Elevate is? How many people's strong?
Oh shoot, they, I don't know that now, they used to be about twenty people, but I think they're way on that now, so, but they, they work in pods.
So we're not talking about one or two?
No.
Three people in IT?
No.
He said they've grown sixty percent a year for the last three years, basically they're almost doubling every year.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, yes ma'am.
Who does Wendy recommend?
Wendy cries at the happiness of being able to have Elevate as her support system. She's a, she loved, she said, I can't believe this, if that would happen, I just can't tell you how much that would mean to me. And she's talked to in people that are employed by Elevate, she's talked to Gabe, who works at Melissa Memorial Hospital, and he's talked about. And part of the reason we wanted that is to have her learn from him about how he started with this help desk kind of approach to things and doing a few other pieces to growing and to being able to be a C T O, basically have that. He had some education stuff, and she could look at what she could do for education, but she is in love with, she does not like Anatomy, I'll just be honest.
And what have we been paying for our IT monthly?
I just had her working on those numbers, and I wish somebody brought them in here, but I didn't, we pay a lot. But I've got it actually separated out, and I can do that for you and send it to you guys, but I I know that we're, we didn't even find all of our contracts yet, and we, we pay so many different vendors for all these services. That I, I don't want to say a number, because I'll be wrong, but I feel like we can afford this. And especially with the fact that we get some reimbursements coming towards us when we start.
Well, cause the reimbursements won't start till next fall, so we'll probably be paying the forty thousand.
Yeah, but I, I personally believe, number one, we've had a couple of companies, I don't even know what they do, you can't get a hold of them in their offices. That's literally the truth of it, like, I
And are we able to get out of all those contracts?
Yeah, we can get out of them, I've been looking at that, and we can get out of those contracts.
Okay, I just quit sending the money.
One of a wind belly up on us.
Yeah.
I have a sort of a technical question that you may not know, but, so if we adopt their Elevate-centric approach. And at some point in the future, we decide we want to do something different. How entrenched will they be into, because they're putting them, like, everything rotates around them like they're the sun?
Well, I mean, that's
That's what it is, right?
And, and so
I think, I think they rotate like that, and I, I was, I'm gonna look at the contracts, but basically you can have their contracts for a year at a time, that sort of thing, so I think you'd have to plan for that. The, the, what they're trying to do is have a perspective for a critical access hospital that doesn't have the expertise to know every little piece of everything you're supposed to have. So they're trying to provide you with one place to go for all of your services. I frankly, looking at what we have now, and not even Wendy understands all of the context we have, we've been digging that up. So I personally like the one-some idea right now, but I, I think it's a one-year, basically you can get out of the contract. Usually with these companies, I tell them, because we're a government entity, a hospital district, that we cannot do anything except a one-year contract with auto renewals if we choose to do it that way. That way it doesn't hold a board. So that the boards have to live with the decision of previous boards for forever. So that's
Yeah, I think in our board, our initial board training, that was a topic that was discussed. And I think a prior board can't bind a future board to, I think they mentioned like accounting services.
You still obligate, you know, like our bill machine, so yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It is an obligation. And I agree with you. My question was, we, along with yours, we were working with an IT company that you can't have the same resource. Maybe it's further and off.
Do you know the name?
He's talking about the one that was the backup for Wendy, I can dig.
Oh, they
Yeah, Trayvon, Trayvon.
Trayvon, we pay him quite a bit of money and they don't, and Wendy says they do very little service for us.
But so can we be out with them?
We can be out with them, yes.
We can be out with all of them, okay.
And the way we run our contracts are nice in that sense of being a hospital district, because we have to write them to really not find future boards.
But I mean, we're not a year out on those then, right? Like, I mean
No, I, I don't think so, we've gotten all that data put together. I would not move forward with something if I thought there was a glitch in it. I just need to have the support of the board to move, a decision to move forward. And I think that timing is very important, because we, we all know that we have some compliance things we need to work on.
Yeah, for sure.
Well, I'm, I was worried, much like your question was, that we're tied with three, three or four IT companies that we can't get out of. And I assume that this Elevate can look, monitor our software.
Monitor software, yeah, they'll do all of that work.
We don't have five or six
The things, it would be nice just to not have duplicate
Yeah, bills all over the place.
I, I noticed that Rich mentioned the helpfulness of being able to monitor our x-ray and those sorts of machines.
Yeah.
I don't recall Anatomy mentioning that.
Yeah, the other thing about, like, we had a bill that came in that was from R L D Trix or something like that. I went to Wendy and I said, I don't recognize this name from before. This is the stuff that scares me sometimes, so she's like looking, and we both looked in all these files, we couldn't find it. Somebody sent us a bill, there's no phone number to it. You know, they said, they bring it to the CEO, because sometimes if we're not careful, we can be pretty stupid about that stuff. And they're trying to get that passed through so that they can get paid, and I don't think they're a company that exists for us.
Right.
So those things are, are real scary too. It's like, you, you know, how many arms do you want to have to pay attention to?
Right.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think it's all. Like a very good way to go. I like that too. Might as well support US labor.
How do we want toward a motion?
Well.
Well, I saw a contract with SharePoint for Rich's group.
Mm-hmm.
So since that contract, since the motion should be us approving you signing the contract.
Mm-hmm.
But that, you're right?
Yeah, after I've done all of my full review, uh, cause I'm gonna double check on the contracts that we have out, but that's what Wendy and I've been working on, so. I, I won't sign it till I'm ready, but I need to sign it pretty fast.
Right, I think you add a November first date.
Yeah.
So, so we need a, some sort of a motion.
Yeah, are you authorizing or motion, do we wanna make it a year? Make it a yearly renewal?
We, sure, we could add that to the motion, but I think Kathy is telling us just standard practice is a year with.
Right, auto renewals, right, mm-hmm, cause we can't find it.
So I guess if that's the standard.
If that's the standard, it's in that, you mean clear in the contract, that would be.
I have them.
Yeah, I just need a, an approval to move forward with working with.
With Elevate.
Elevate to.
Which means signing contract.
Right, signing the contract.
Madam Chairman, I move that we give our CEO uh, authority to uh, evaluate the Elevate contract and sign. That contract for Weston County Hospital.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same.
Did you have a question that you didn't get answered? No, okay. Thank you, I just remember your hand at one point, so. Okay.
It'll go up again.
Okay.
So that motion passed. Can we move on to um. To the finance.
Sure, um.
Do you want me to pull up any more?
Well, uh, we have a banking request, which I gave to the chair, because, just because for ease. But we essentially are changing up some of the signature requests for, for um. First Northern, I almost had a brain moment there, and then we also had not updated since Randy's been here for Pinnacle. So we need to u- update those and.
Do you want me to pass these around so that we can see?
Yeah, you can, you can do that, but basically I wanted to let you know the highlights, the highlights is that Sandy Dixon will still be able to. Um, look at information, but she's being taken off of the um, wire transfers and off of the um. Online banking piece, other than the view stuff, she might need that, and that's mainly because now that we're bringing a CFO in and we've been able to get our accounting. Department put together, we need to actually do a better job of controlling that separating duties, so um, we're asking that. We add Emma Anderson, who's our account, junior accountant, so that she can actually do. Alicia won't be doing any of the wiring or transferring of money, because she's doing the direct GL work all the time. But I'd like Emma to be able to do the transfers if the CFO's not able to do them, does that make sense?
Yeah.
And um, I'm on there just because if there's an emergency and nobody else is around it, probably I can be able to do that. Um, and then there's view onlys for a couple of people on Sandy's team, Kim and Jan, and that's because they have to be able to look at those. To be able to reconcile some of the stuff that they're working on.
Could I say one thing, so I think in May or June, I was looking at a lot of the checks that were being written.
Mm-hmm.
And I think at that time, Leanne's name was still being stamped on the checks.
It worked, it was, we've changed that.
Oh, okay.
That's all been changed, but we uh. Definitely need to get this updated, and then with Pinnacle Bank, we just hadn't updated it, so now it's updated and it's got the similar. Type of information about who can authorize and who are signers, and then who can um. Basically view only, so. I'll pass this around if anybody else wants to look at it, but the big things are separating duties.
And, and you don't, that's just, do you, do you need a motion for that as well?
Well, I just need you guys to sign, to approve it, because I have to have it for the minutes.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
So do, do we wire money?
Yeah, we do, there's a couple of places we have to wire money to, one is the state, so. Medicaid.
So is it proper if I make that motion if I'm one of the signers, or would you rather somebody else make the motion?
I think it, oh, how did they do it with us on that, remember at the bank?
Well, they wanted only to have signers that were already on the account.
They'd rather prefer that you and Anne are the ones that make motion and approve it, because you're the signers on the to the account.
Alright, so that's totally opposite of what I thought, so.
That's a negative.
Right.
I think that'd be very wrong.
I will make a motion that we change the signatories on the Weston County Health Services accounts. In the plan outlined in Kathy Harshberger's letter.
Right, for both of them, yeah, First Northern and Pinnacle.
First Northern and Pinnacle Bank.
You said signature what?
Signatories.
Signatories. I also.
It's kind of odd.
It is. I know, I'm not sure why First Northern, but they're particular, so.
Pinnacle's just like bring me a letter, sign it, somebody.
Yeah, just bring me a letter, that's what they say, if these guys want more minutes.
Show me the minutes.
They don't even want the minutes. They just want a letter, so.
Alright, so all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposing, same. Okay, so that is passed, um.
Now that we got the box and asked.
Yeah.
Okay, the finance committee, did you guys wanna bring anything forward on the finance, finance committee? Uh, the finance.
Were you going to present?
I'll present the October stuff, so just as some updates on old business. The twenty twenty-three audit should be delivered to us within the next ten days, we've been. We're really pushing on them to get it to us, so I think we should have it next week, really. Uh, twenty twenty-four audit, it's still being actively reconstructed, as we call it, that, that means rec, we're still reconciling twenty twenty-four. Actually, Emma's, with Emma being here, she's helping Patty, and we're hoping that'll go a little bit faster, but. That, that is a bear, the reconciliation, cause none of it was done um, previously. Uh, the earliest that we'll have pre- preliminary trial balances will be descent, the end of December, so probably after Christmas.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information. On our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Uh, the earliest that we'll have pre- preliminary trial balances will be descent, the end of December, so probably after Christmas. Medicare cost reports, um, as we suggested that would happen, we, we were rejected to turn in our cost report late because of our. Waiting on audits and everything, so what the, what CMS wrote in a letter to us is that we could do our best in providing the information available. And then later revise it when we get to our actual number, so that's what we're going to do, and was, any of you have? Some other magic trick, but that's, that's what we have to do, um, and it will solve our filing issue. Cause the only other option we have is to get a fifty percent reduction in our pay while we're waiting to do that, and I don't think we can afford to do that. Well, I know we can afford to do it. On our Medicare settlements, um. John said it could be material, I personally think that our settlements with Medicare, you know, you can either give money back to them or they. Give you more money, because when you start to settle that, our numbers are not, our numbers are actually a little bit lower than they were the previous year in most of our. Areas, um, so I think we'll probably be okay there, I don't, really don't think we're gonna end up owing a bunch of money back, I think in fact it might be the reverse. That we'll get more money in, um. Cash flow and liquidity position, so I have that here, but um.
You want me to put that up?
You can if you want, the cash flow, um, we're at two. Point nine million dollars in our funds. And that is the, while that's still a decline on our cash flow, we did increase, we decreased our expenses from seven seventy-five a month. To six hundred thousand a month, what that equates to is thirty more days of cash on hand, so we have eight months worth of cash for operations versus. Uh, seven.
Yeah, sixty-seven days.
Yeah, so. Mm-hmm.
So, uh, we got in finance, but he said four point nine, did you mean to say four point nine?
Oh, cash and investments, four point nine.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry.
Wow, that went down a lot last year.
I, I, sorry, where, where that number came from is our, we're looking at an operating loss next, next for the twenty twenty-three year. Two points.
And can I ask a quick follow-up? So what John had provided, I think we all got this, is we've kind of split our expenses between salary benefits and then non-pay expense. Are you talking about the non, there's been a reduction in the non? Your category, this is the September.
So we said this is shit.
Is it, and so that's in last month.
Oh, yeah, this was last month, sorry, I keep everything.
In the, in the.
Yeah, you mentioned an expense reduction.
Yeah, we have an expense reduction, and it is in the, it's not necessarily in the salaries, it's in our, the expenses that we've been able to reduce.
And Kathy, what, the expenses, we reduced them from seven seventy-five to what?
Six hundred, which is really nice, that's really nice. We are working pretty hard on it, it's nice to catch up, have the bills cut up too, so, that's the good news as well, and I think um. We have a CMS price transparency audit that was done, we don't have all the information we're supposed to have on the website. And we are working with Epic, because that's part, what Epic does for us is make sure that we have the information we need from Epic. To put onto the website, so we had a, the letter get, I had to say that I'd read the letter within five days, I sent that back to the. CMS saying that I'd read the letter, we have forty-five days for an action plan on it, and we have ninety. Days, I think it is, to have it fully implemented, so we should be in good shape with that, to get it up to where it's supposed to be.
One check Kathy.
Hmm?
One check.
One check. So, um. Tish, Ms., uh, Tish Miller will be coming here November fourth, she'll start working as CFO full-time.
That was my question.
Yeah, so she'll be here, that'll be exciting, we still will be having help from um, John, because we really need to still, we have to do both things, get the. Old stuff taken care of and take care of the current pieces, so I think that'll help us transition a little faster, again, um. We are doing some reviews of our payer groups and our contracts, I think in your packet, I won't go over that in detail. But in your packet, you have the information about how much we're being paid by each payer, um, it's probably in the packet. That.
I guess I didn't get it back.
Yeah, well, here, I'll give you my packet.
Just keep talking.
Basically, it shows you, we did this with the business, I mean, the finance committee for sure, so it basically is showing what we get paid by the. In the individual payers, and um, how we are reimbursed from them, so we're doing more work on that, but that's. That's good for us to know, because we didn't know, um, and some of our contracts have unfortunately been signed that they're. Supposed to be that way for, until perpetude, which I wish we wouldn't have done, so, but, but it is what it is.
Does, does that, does that, is there some, did the whole board get these?
They're probably in the SharePoint, they're in the SharePoint.
They are.
Yeah, we're trying to make sure to have everything in the SharePoint for you. And what else, guys, did I forget? We're starting to be able to get out our overtime reports and those kinds of things that we hadn't had access to before, as well as our statistical data. Um, we're probably, until we get that reconciling done, we can't do a P and L sheet or balance sheet yet, but we're getting there, so. I just keep saying that, but it's every day, I know it's a little bit closer, so I have a lot of optimism that we'll have that soon. Um, for all of you, so we're paying, uh, we, we've been doing a lot of work on benefits as well, we're gonna present that today, so that you can look at that. Um, the overtime, we've mentioned it to our staff in August, and. We had quite a lot of overtime, and in September it dropped significantly anyway, but it's still a work in progress. There are some numbers in there that I think are something funky with them, and so that's the word, it is funky, so we're digging into those a little deeper with managers. Because they look like they may be some sort of an error in that number. Well, like, well, for instance, one department having five hundred and fifty-six hours of overtime, that's. Yeah, so, yeah, that's a lot, so. Yeah. Um, and I think. AR days are at right around fifty-nine days now, instead, that's different than you saw in the, the committee meeting, because. I went back and did a little checking on it, it was higher than that I thought it was, because we've had people missing, so the AR days are up at fifty-nine days.
We've had people with.
Gone, and so, missing from their positions, so they're not billing, basically, is what that boils down to. Hmm, and I think I'll call it good with that.
So, do you, thank you.
Hmm?
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Um, do you wanna move on to the, before you got this?
Yeah, and, sorry, go ahead.
I'll go ahead, Carrie.
I just had two things to add, first that, um, I'm super excited to be seeing some financial reports, and I think the. Finance committee was um, happy to see progress being made, which is awesome, um, and we're very grateful, um. John Gantner also was very, very accommodating and uh, willing to help with the transition plan to the new CFO, he said. He could be onsite, offsite, he could come one month, two months, whatever we wanted, so we're grateful for that, and, and thankful that he's so. Accommodating and helpful to getting us back on track, um, he did ask. That we make a recommendation as a finance board to engage DZA to do our twenty twenty-four.
Oh, thank you, I remember that, yeah.
Okay, so, um, we that. Get the finance, we need to figure that, that will be a recommendation, um, because it was John's recommendation that we engage DZA. Because of the progress that they're currently making, and we wanted to keep them on track. To make more progress, uh, rather than just holding firm for it.
And could I add?
Yeah, and, and so with that, we need approval for an engagement letter.
Right, so, just so everybody knows, it looks like a, we compared bids with Casey Peterson and uh.
DZA.
Eddie Bailey.
Yeah, and I.
And, oh, I, yeah, I, I always get that wrong, and so we, we did get comparative quotes, and uh.
And DZA was the best.
Yes, they're, they're the best in terms of spending, it sounds like everybody's happy with the relationship.
Very happy with them, and this has only been their first year, so really audit companies, you don't need to change more than. More often than about every three years, if you like them, so I think that we should stay with them for a second year or two, so.
So that will be the recommendation of the finance board, is that you engage DZA to do our twenty twenty-four audit. And if the committee would like to, like a motion, um, to vote on.
We need a motion, here Kathy, if you want.
I will uh, make a motion that we engage DZA to do our twenty twenty-four audit.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's okay. I'll second. All those in favor say, or any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposing, same. That, that motion is passed.
Okay, just a quick note, just so you all know, that we're gonna have the community um, health needs. health needs assessment start on Au- October twenty-ninth. We're gonna have our first meeting for that. There'll be two separate meetings, the other one will be a month or two later. So, um, we're gonna, we're gathering up the names and we'll have people come in to do that and then they will link up with their friends and stuff to be able to get surveys from the community.
When would that start Kathy?
October twenty-ninth.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And just so you know, Laura Koenig, the nurse practitioner, did science, is gonna sign her contract, so she was, she approved it. Ladies Night Out was really good success. I think we got thirty-one people signed up for, some that had it during the event and then some that are coming in afterwards, but about thirty-one people have gotten autographs out of that. It was, it was really well received and our doctors were there to, um, meet people and, yeah, encouraged. And thank you to the board members that attended too.
That was very nice, it was really positive and.
Yeah, just kind of moving into that seat, that part of the CEO. And then the town hall meetings went very well. We had, we had a nice crowd for the, the public one and we had employees there as well and then we had an employee one in the afternoon. And, um, they asked tough questions, I answered them and we seemed like we did pretty well with it. So, yeah, it was really good.
And you are planning an evening one sometime?
Yes, I'm gonna try to do a evening one before or around before nine, the first of November, so, and I'll probably do that this time at the, um, lodge where, where they have a meeting room, so that we can have a evening one as well.
Any plans for Upton?
Good question. Yes, I'll plan for Upton. I just don't know where I'm planning it, but I will plan it before then. Yes, I will.
Idea where we should have a, have one there?
The Upton Community Centers.
Yeah, Upton. Okay, okay, very good. I'll do it. And.
If you let me know, I'll be there.
Okay, thank you. The staff actually read a letter and everybody clapped and they, they talked about the, uh, they actually, the paper wants to do it, Bob Bonner wants to do a separate article with an interview with me, so I think we, I think we did well with the town hall. So, got to introduce our leaders, it was good.
How, yeah, so, are we ready to talk about the employment?
Yes, and I'm gonna have JT do that, um, pieces.
A little information, it'll be on the, the screen, but sometimes these, uh, are a little smaller on the screen, so I figured I would also get the presentation. We have, uh, done a pretty exhaustive look into our, our, our current benefits with our enrollment. And this is, uh, where we are landing. Uh, so if you have, you'll have two, uh, papers. One is the PowerPoint presentation that we're also going to use on the screen. And then the other one is just a summary, uh, of what changes will be made if, uh, the proposal is approved and how it will affect, um, our employees. So, uh, one of the first things I did was, uh, and I think Hannah and our team, uh, and Kathy and all that kind of work worked with us, we had to really look at what we were offering and, um, check out the expenses. We were looking, uh, when I first got here, about a twenty percent rate hike for our employee benefits. One of the first things I did when I looked at it, when I onboarded, was realized that our benefits are really high and steep for our employees. So we wanted to figure out what was going on and how we could make it better. So what we did is we looked at, uh, the market and we realized that our HSA contributions from the employer are way out of market and our, uh, co-pays, or not our co-pays, but our employee side of the payments are out of market as well. So after talking, we looked at trying to adjust ourselves, but not bite off too much so that the employees feel like they're losing or missing out on anything. So the first slide you'll see with the, the coverage shows our current two thousand and twenty-four, um, employer, um, and employee, go ahead, contributions. Um, as you can see, um, we have three plans, uh, two PPOs and one HSA. Uh, the first PPO has a, just a very few amount of, um, employees on it.
Are these amounts per paycheck, per month?
This is per month. So yes, these numbers are, and that's the reason why I printed it, because that's so small up there. These are our monthly amounts. So this is our current, uh, so if you're a family of, um, with a spouse and a family and you're on that low deductible, you're gonna pay one thousand, right now, one thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents a month. Now, when I think about some of our employees and some of the positions we have, I don't know how they could afford that. Um, and, and then you look down and then you can see the annual plan cost for each of these plans, what it costs the employees. So right now, employees are paying five hundred and three thousand dollars for their coverage. That is their premiums that come out bi-weekly. The hospital is picking up one point five million, uh, dollars of the premium. Uh, so we have the three quarters and we put a quarter on our employees. Um, so when you look at the total spend for our current two thousand and twenty-four benefits for just the Blue Cross Blue Shield, it is two million and six, uh, doll, six thousand dollars. So if you'll turn to the next, uh, paper, uh, and it's on the back. You'll see that this is a continuation of that first slide. This just shows, um, where we are projecting this to be. So when we began to discuss as an executive team, we were trying to figure out how to lower these premiums and we were looking in the HSA contributions from the employer, realizing that it is way out of market. We are giving and giving a, a, a whole lot into the HSA funds, therefore all of the other plans are picking up the, the, the tab literally and causing the premiums to, to go high. So we asked for a, a scenario where we are not taking away the HSA, but the possibility of splitting it in half. Leaving, right now, we are, we are contributing two hundred and six thousand dollars a year into HSA accounts for employees. Two hundred and six thousand dollars a year, so we take that with the two million six thousand, you see where we're at, at one, two point two, uh, twelve. What we did, looked at was taking a half of that, two hundred and six thousand, a hundred and three and spreading it out over the premiums for our employees so that they could reduce those rates, possibly get some of our employees into a different, um, uh, a plan. And that's what the, the paper, you see, uh, we're looking at reductions, so the, instead of the employees uh, paying, uh, five hundred and three, there'll be a re- reduction to four hundred thousand and you'll see that reflected in the EE cost share and EE difference. Uh, most of them are about twenty percent reductions for our employees. Uh, the single ones are about a ten percent reduction. Uh, so, we are looking at a plan increase. Uh, we knew it would be about, about twenty percent. We do have some caveats that will help us offset some of these totals. Uh, what it looks like to the organization is about a two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollar increase for this year's, um, benefit enrollment period, which is not twenty percent thankfully, it's only ten. And we have some other items that will also get us under that ten percent mark. Are there any questions about this scenario here?
Could I ask a couple?
Absolutely.
So, um, there's a, a column here that says subscribers?
Mm-hmm, that's the number of participants in each of those categories from our, our.
So we have, what, like, two twenty-seven, two hundred and twenty-seven employees?
Yeah, the, something like that.
So ninety?
But not all of those.
Only ninety-some are actually on our insurance.
Ninety-eight. Right now, and I think, I think the other part to just mention real quick is, on the HSA plan from the, the Gallagher Group, they really told us not only were we way above the market on what we were contributing into it, but we actually had people on that plan that really shouldn't be on that plan, that were probably moved on and incentivized to be on it, but they really actually need to be on the medical plan, the other plans instead. So we're trying to make sure that we not only, um, yes, we're reducing that HSA spend, but we're actually trying to move people into a better market a- as far as what their, their premiums are gonna be for them going forward.
So like Kathy said, so the, the numbers are the same as far as what the employee's gonna get, we're just trying to relieve some stress from the premiums.
So is it relieving stress or, it's obviously relieving stress for the employees, what about for the organization?
What we're doing is, and, and, and this is something that we will discuss because even at a half, even at, uh, leaving a hundred and three thousand for HSA, uh, contributions, that's still, uh, for the market extremely high. We should actually, we, we should be about fifty-six thousand dollars as far as the hospital's contribution to HSAs. So we did look at a couple of models that would cut it in, uh, three-fourths or cut it completely out. What we felt like at the time, it's hard to take things away when we're making changes and we're looking at some pretty significant changes to the benefit program. So this is something we can look at for the next benefit enrollment, that HSA reduction. What it does is it reduces, um, the employee, the employee side. We would take the hike, but as we get through the presentation, you'll see where we have found some other ways to save money in the overall premium to make those numbers go down.
So can I ask a question? So we, we own a hospital.
Mm-hmm.
Um, do, if.
We're incentivizing that.
Well, we own a hospital, so if one of our employees comes for their care here, do we charge, or, you understand what I'm saying? Why can't we offer them care at cost and reduce our, does that mean?
Uh, well, we are reducing it, our percentage if they come here versus going someplace else, but, uh,
Well, yeah.
Yeah, but as, as far as saying that we'll write off all of it, we have to.
Not, not all of it, but, so let's say somebody needed a lab. So I'm just looking at this total number and every time I've been part of this conversation, it's always a double-digit percentage increase every year, that's just how these things go. Couldn't we control our costs by say, you know, if somebody needs a lab, it costs us fifty dollars to do? If we charge them two, do we pay ourselves if they come here for their care? Is that in this number? I, I'm, I'm just kind of thinking.
I'm trying to make sure I understand.
So if, let's say employee A comes to the hospital for a lab
Mm-hmm.
and we charge them two hundred, it costs us fifty. We could have just charged them fifty, cover our cost and reduce our total costs. This may be a wild idea, but.
Well, I, we didn't have them look at doing that, we had them look at giving them a, a, a discount, a twenty percent discount, isn't it? Twenty percent discount on their bill. And I think, I think we have to be careful because there are some laws relative to that.
All I'm asking is, is do we have offsetting revenue? If, if all of our employees came here,
Mm-hmm.
then if we're charging them full market price,
We don't.
or whatever we charge, then, then we're making some money off of it. So we have offsetting revenue to these expenses. So is this number net of that? Uh, maybe we could talk about this more another time.
I can, I can get us more information. I know that we're taking twenty percent off the bills for employees. I also, uh, uh, that's the rate reduction as far as what we are, uh, charging, correct Kathy?
Yeah, I know what you're saying about the offset, I just don't think we have that answer for you.
Also, it's more just a question for us, uh, just if we own a hospital.
Right, yeah.
Maybe we could find a way to use our hospital to reduce these costs to us and everybody.
I, I commend you on your, uh, but you're not saving the hospital money, you're saving the insurance company money at that time, point then.
Well, it's, it's an idea, yes, maybe in the future we could explore.
And there are certain rules, we have to, we have to treat people, we can only go so much of a discount of that sort of thing with employees in, in order to not violate Medicare laws, so.
And so.
Is that what Medicare?
Correct.
Yes.
So what we've done, if you, so our plan benefits, the, the two low deductible plans actually have domestic claim, uh, a different out-of-pocket for domestic claims. So if they come in and they've got that, uh, PPO two fifty or PPO seven fifty and they get all their services here, they actually hit, uh, their in-house deductible, uh, would be it for an individual, two fifty for a family, five hundred. So that's one of the other incentive, incentives. So if they come here and get some lab work done, I mean, probably one X-ray, technically they will hit their out-of-pocket max and the insurance will take care of everything that remains for their expenses here. So that's one thing. The other thing, the way that the self-funded plans work, it's important that we do keep those domestic claims because that is cash on hand. And so that helps us in the long run with our, uh, plan. So, but those are good options to look at as far as, you know, what we can do to help, uh, limit, uh, the exposure to our employees because that is really where we're trying to land here.
And not get in trouble with the law.
Correct.
On page two, what is the percentage for the, uh, employee versus a percentage for the hospital? I'm looking at numbers here and I'm confused, the other was twenty-five, seventy-five.
Correct. So if you look at this page, this is the employees.
Tell people where you're pointing.
Okay, I apologize. I'm, I'm on that, on that page. I am, um, I'm right here on, um, this, this back page of the, that first spreadsheet. This is the continuation of the spreadsheet. So this is the employee's contribution, uh, current. And, uh, this would be, uh, the employer's contribution with the renewal. So these show the share of costs. So currently, it's at twenty-four percent, we will reduce it to nineteen, and this is what it would be in dollars. So it's on this side over here, what the employees pay and then this is what the employer pays.
So if the, where we see in the first line, current twenty-four percent, uh, versus nineteen percent, that, uh, the hospital would jump to eighty-one percent rather than seventy-five percent.
Right, but we have, if you listen to the rest of the presentation, we have a way to get to savings.
So the way that we're making that work is we are moving funds that we've already designated towards the plan through the HSA contributions. So it shows a different percentage, yes, a drop, but it's coming out of a budget that is already in.
Okay, good heavens.
And, and are you, is the plan to stick with Blue Cross?
For this renewal, yes. Unfortunately,
We didn't have enough time.
I wish that I would have had another month or two, but when we came in, we, literally the decision to get this to be done in time has to be, the decision has to be made the twenty-third of October, and that's why we have been pushing. And we literally just got some of these numbers back yesterday. Okay, so it just happened to work out that it, we have the information. If you wanna go ahead to the next one and I'm gonna try to be quick. These are the new HSA contributions. All I did was split them fifty percent. So I've already, some employees have already seen this and they were really surprised in, in the HR office, they thought it would be much less, maybe a couple hundred a month, but to see that they, a family on that HSA plan uh, would still receive twenty-seven hundred dollars in HSA contributions throughout the year. I do think we've got some work to do with these part-time numbers because I've never seen part-time employees get that kind of a contribution. Well, I've never seen any employees get this kind of contribution to HSAs. You know, seven hundred to a thousand a year is about where I've seen it is in the market. But this, we need to look for the next time at these part-time. We don't have a lot on them, the part-time policy, so it was negligible at this moment. The next one is where we're gonna find another savings. Uh, this is where we are seeing that two hundred and seventy, uh, thousand dollar increase. This is where we're gonna drop money off of it. What our proposal is, is to take our specialty pharmacy items, our specialty drug product program, instead of running it externally, we're gonna run it right through our retail pharmacy here. Uh, this will save the organization and I did the math, it's on, uh, the actual paper, the single paper that I gave you. Uh, when you, this is a nine-month snapshot, uh, but by utilizing our pharmacy, we will save a hundred and twenty-eight thousand approximately out of our plan cost. And that's not, that number is not in those other spreadsheets. So this is another bucket that we can save up to a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand to reduce that seven hundred, or that two hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase. Does that make sense?
Did you annualize that or is it?
Yes, that's annualized, yes. And not only will the hospital save a hundred and twenty-nine approximately thousand dollars towards our healthcare plan, employees will save between nine and twelve thousand dollars who are on these nets, getting them through our 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 own retail pharmacy.
Way to go. Good job.
So that's a good savings that we were able to find and uh that helps us. And that's why I said if you, the whole presentation will show us where we're saving some money. We we really looked into this and and I thank Kathy for allowing me to have a little bit of a free hand to kind of uh explore this. The next slide we're gonna go to, um so that takes care of our HSA. That takes care of our um uh. Uh uh, I'm a little ahead of myself. That takes care of where we are for the HSA and the health insurance.
Yeah.
The next page uh and and the pharmacy would be the vision. The next page uh and and the pharmacy would be the vision. Uh if if the the employees have had a major problem with our vision plan through Blue Cross Blue Shield because the local uh uh doctor doesn't take it. So many people are going or traveling. So we've had a lot, one of the first things that Hannah told me when I got here is that the people wanted us to look at VSP as an option for our vision. So that's what we did. Uh we have the the VSP option uh versus the current Blue Cross Blue Shield plan. Uh again, this, when I look at this, I don't see a great benefit to the VSP as far as uh m- material money. Because technically it's about a hundred dollars for material out less than what we have through Blue Cross. But the problem is, is that most of the Blue Cross has to be reimbursed and it's a, it's a process to go through. And most of the places in our area, Rapid, et cetera, take this VSP. And that is really what the employees are asking for. So Kathy felt that this is one of those items because if we're gonna be kind of looking at some other areas, it would be good for us to uh put this on the docket for our employees so that they can have a better choice of vision plans. And the 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 costs monthly are, you know, roughly uh seven, five to seven dollars uh a month. So a couple bucks per per paper. Gives them the opportunity because we do have some folks that are having vision problems, can't drive to Rapid, they need to go here. And this VSP is 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 accepted by our local um doctor, optometrist, yes. Any questions about this vision side?
That seems clear.
Crystal clear.
Our, our.
The next one is uh upon getting into uh my role, looking at our EIAB, which is our Extended Illness Absence Bank. We are one of the only organizations that I've ever seen that really has something like this on top of our PPL. We did some numbers. We're estimated to spend probably a hundred and forty five to a hundred and sixty thousand just on the EIAB. That that is a benefit where you accrue it slowly throughout the year and then you can use it if you are sick and you're out. Uh we determine through doctor's notes internally. Uh after seven days, they they take what PPL they have, then they can be approved for the EIAB and uh they use those benefits. We have almost three thousand uh, almost uh three thousand hours of EAB benefits that are sitting out there.
Over three thousand.
Correct.
Yeah.
And when you you put dollar signs to that, it's quite uh steep. We have a tremendous PPL, which is our paid, I we call, I call it paid time off. But our paid leave time uh which is very comparable, the accrual rate is very good. So my recommendation uh when perceiving this was, you know, I've always been a part of of organizations that have short-term and long-term disability plans. These are hospital-paid. They don't cost the employees anything. But this would be a supplement to replace the EIAB benefits so that we stop accruing on those balances. So this is what you see. What we've done is we've shopped it out. Uh uh we have UNO now, which does our uh our basic life and our accidental death and dismemberment. And we've shopped out the whole package. We want all of it, volunteer life, voluntary uh accidental death, dismemberment, our basic life, and we want short-term disability, long-term disability, one plan. So we looked at this, we 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 have a quote from Standard that will do all of our, the things that we need for our our life and our accidental death and our s- short-term disability, long-term disability. For a hundred and thirteen thousand, this is their quote per year. So you can already see there's another thirty thousand dollars in savings once we get this moving forward that will come back into um the benefits, the coppers of the benefits.
The the one thing we're doing is doing a sunset though, so that we're gonna give it two years to sunset the E, for those that have it, anybody coming in new will go straight to the short-term, long-term disability. And I think the important thing on on that to note is that um we're also still working on trying to get a lower number because we are gonna try to get credits against the money that we have already that we're gonna be spending. So this number should go down.
It 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 should go down. We actually have one more company that is sub- that is submitting quotes and they're to be lower than MetLife and Standard. So the only thing that this can do is go down. And then because of the number of hours that we have in the accrual, that will also give us credits because our employees will also have to use them. That's what the sunset is. We're we're not taking it away, but we're saying yeah, two years. Try to use them up, get them done, then we're not putting any more on the books. And uh our employees that have earned them over the years still have access to those hours for the next two years. The great thing about the short-term disability and the long-term disability, now, God forbid, we don't want that to happen. But it is going to start the the first of the month following uh their uh employment with us. So this is going to be a better benefit and you'll go on to the next slide and you will see what this will offer to our employees. First, you'll see the the volunteer life. We go with the standard. They're gonna receive a thirty five thousand dollar increase in, instead of the fifteen thousand flat that we pay for, they'll get fifty thousand. There's a whole lot of information here. Uh the rates are really good. Uh we really like what Standard has uh and that would be our our basic life, our volunteer life, uh as you see. Any questions about that? That's.
I just really quick want to mention to you that the way that we built the E I A B, I do not agree with at all. It, we we make it so that somebody could literally have ninety days of illness pay per year. You know, they can accrue up to that amount of money and into the illness benefit and that's, that's not sustainable.
That's why we have employees that aren't here.
Yes.
But yes, technically you could have enough PPL and E I A B to be going for six months paid right now.
So that is, that's not a good, that's not sustainable model.
No.
Not sustainable.
So that is why we we feel like this would be a better solution. The next one shows uh and these are, I'm I'm not gonna get into these that much. It's pretty much the same benefit, but if you look, it's like fractions for the volunteer life and accidental death and dismemberment. The the, these are small, I I apologize. But you see the current, it's like thirty four uh cents for person zero to nineteen for every ten thousand. Over here it's point zero seven. So the 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 benefit is much better. It's a richer benefit for the employee and it'll give them uh the opportunity for more.
It also takes management of short-term disability and long-term disability out of the building.
So somebody else is worrying about it.
Right, somebody else is worrying about it and they're the ones making the determination if they qualify for it.
So we would simply, and the next, go ahead. Oh, the next slide is the short-term disability, actually. Uh this shows, so the plan that we're looking at would be the uh the market option two, the standard. Uh they would have seven days to uh, they would have two PPL. And then on that eighth day, their short-term disability benefits would start. Sixty percent of their wages up to a maximum of fifteen hundred, which is still a rich number. I've seen most organizations only give it eight fifty max per week. And uh this is really, really a good number. They can, they can so collect it for up to thirteen months. All of the administration is done through.
Thirteen weeks.
Thirteen weeks, yes, thank you. That's a little bit too long. Uh all the administration is done through an external company. They get a W two, they take the taxes out. These are just, this simplifies this EAB, this out leave package. Any questions about this, short-term disability? The next page is long-term disability. Um and that, that's a sixty percent max, up to five thousand dollars. Um it's, it it honestly, when we looked at this, uh technically the long-term disability, if if an employee worked here and became disabled and went through short-term and long-term, they could technically collect on this up till their sixty five birthday, their sixty fifth birthday.
They'll also help them get onto SSDI or that sort of appropriate stuff.
They support with the process of getting social security because they want them off of uh the 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 long-term uh disability benefit.
Well, actually they'll pay that along with the SSDI if they qualify.
If they qualify. So what the benefit is to the organi- to the, to the employee is for the organization, we take half, we lower uh our rates so that the employees have a little bit of breathing room. Hopefully they get on to one of the other plans that's more affordable with the lower deductible. That will save us money. Vision gives the employees the 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 VSP that they're looking for, the life uh insurance, accidental death, dismemberment. It's a better, richer benefit, short-term disability. It looks, uh uh it's sort of over a thirty thousand dollar savings for the organization over handling our in-house E I A B. Again, that will sunset in two years and then those benefits will be gone. So anybody coming new, they won't accrue once this goes into effect. Um specialty pharmacy looks to save us about a hundred and twenty nine thousand approximately and the employees about twelve thousand. So after reviewing this, what what we would like to to do is have permission uh to move forward with the the proposal that is recommended. And then I'll turn it over to, unless there's any other questions, I'll turn it over back over to Kathy. Sorry, I was talking fast. I, you guys are in a time crunch.
Thank you. Thank you for thinking about that.
And part of um our push for this tonight is because we have had to work on very short timeline and we have to be able to start doing enrollment by the, the fourth, fourth of November. So we don't have.
Also on the fourth of November to the twelfth.
Yeah, so we're.
So I'm I'm just gonna say, I think I have a conflict of interest with this topic, so I'm gonna just take a break.
Okay, well, you can listen.
That's not fair.
Yeah.
You don't have to leave, you just can't vote.
So we're asking for you to, I don't know if you want to do them individually or as just the employee benefits plans to be able to move forward. I think with the limited time that we've had, we've done a really good job of doing some thorough review and um analysis. And we've done as much carving out of savings that we can this year without uh really upsetting the employees. And I actually think we're gonna give some of them a bigger advantage to be able to afford to be on the insurance plan. So um is it perfect? Probably not, but we have only so much time to work with, so uh I think it's pretty darn good though. I'm real proud of the work that's been done.
Very creative. Thank you for doing that.
Has anybody heard of any employees against this?
No, but we really haven't. We've talked to the leadership group in general about what we were doing. And I I, we haven't heard any complaint and they know that we're trying to make a benefit for them on their their insurance, but at the same time find cost savings and they know that we need to do that. So my prediction is most people are gonna be fine with it based on what the leadership's reactions have been to the, the implementation.
That you actually lower their out-of-pocket, out of their paycheck.
Right.
That's gonna be huge.
Their premiums.
Yeah.
Be great for that.
And we're gonna do extensive education.
Yeah.
Because we'll have to because of the changes for all of us.
Well, I.
Go ahead.
I move that we accept the new benefits package for the employees.
Thank you so much for that support.
In both the favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same. Okay, there you go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good team, good team.
Thank you guys. Thank you so much. Again, I, the numbers show that it'll be maybe a five percent to the organization. That's what we're trying to get flat.
Well, it'd be twenty percent.
Sure does, yeah.
It'd be normal, but they they hit you with a few months, that's probably a little tiny increase and then you you kind of swallow the hard pill. Well, it it's only twelve, so you need to feel good about that. Usually how that works.
Okay, so um.
To quality now.
Do you want to, do you want to do the board training? Talk about that.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Um, oh, somebody should grab me. Yeah, I don't already went. Tell this break's over. Back to work.
I have a chair, I'm gonna have to have a break.
I know. I'm I'm hoping we can get to it.
I haven't found a conflict, but I'm looking for it.
No, I, so I, I just, hopefully we can, in five minutes, we wait five minutes to, it'll take us five minutes to get to this.
All right, I'll cross my legs.
I hope so. Poor Kim has been sitting here the whole night.
She has.
I can make sure Shane to the.
Yes.
Shane's got the same goal. And JT did a good job of getting through all that material in that time.
Yeah. I almost gave you thirteen months.
Nathan?
Now we've lost, now we've lost uh.
Oh.
Corinne.
Corinne, should we take a break now?
No, here it is. Oh.
Can I come back to you?
No, yeah, no.
Corinne was off looking for you. Now she's gone.
They did vote to approve the benefits, just so you know.
Yeah.
We were upset that you got to take a break though.
Well, I think it's time for everybody to take a break.
My was upset, I'm not gonna.
It just, it just happened to work out.
So I'm trying to hold us to, hold us to where, to the, until we get to the candidates.
So it's all up to you two when they get to go to the bathroom.
Okay.
No pressure though.
Okay, okay.
You wanna do it?
Board training. Um, if Kathy would like us to give, if we plan on a half a day, Kathy would like us to give her some times, some options um for her to make, to work with Tony. And we're looking at starting when?
Anytime between now and.
Anytime between now and the November meeting. Is that what you would say?
Yeah, anytime between now and the November meeting. It's just things that we have to avoid is what would probably be easiest for me and then I can pick from there if you guys are okay with that.
Well, I'm gonna go back to times. It's easier for me in the afternoon.
Okay, afternoon.
Yeah, but I don't, that's me. That's, we've got other members on this board.
It's easier for Mary on Friday afternoons, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, except one Friday a month, we have professional development.
Which week?
It varies.
So the best Friday would be November fifteenth for me? Is that, is that after the board meeting?
Brad's having, is a total knee on the twelfth. I don't know if I'm gonna be.
I know.
Come away. You're gonna be. That's the, the. And you're having.
I'm having, the nineteenth, I'm having surgery.
The eleventh, I'm having a doctor's.
The week of the eleventh.
You're having an ostomy.
Is this?
Is the whole week of the eleventh.
I'm like, all right.
I got one of, I got one of those on the fourth.
The fifteenth is a Friday, so it's the week of the.
What about November first is a Friday?
November first?
No, yes, no.
Oh, never the first. Inventory day.
It's close of the month.
Yeah, close of the month, that's the one. I count her.
So about November, okay, the next, November eighth?
Don't, you don't have to go around Friday. I mean, I can go, I can just.
It just came on my data focus on, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's. I'm, that's still the weekend that I'm not sure if we're gonna be gone. I don't know yet, but.
We don't have school that case.
I'm I'm generally unavailable on Fridays.
Yeah. The eighth, I have to stay.
Well, yeah, because your life is working.
Other laws procedure, yeah.
And if it's a half-day, I.
That makes it difficult.
So another thought, and and I probably can talk Tony into that, is that we could try to make it on a weekend and you, we could, you know, like on a Saturday or something.
Chance to.
Yeah, that's still.
Don't interfere with Wyoming football. I'm on.
What if you could what?
I mean, I I could probably.
You could try it out on a weekend if that made better sense to people.
I'm trying to try and incentivize us with the weekend.
Wednesdays are good.
I was wondering what your offering is.
I mean, Nathan, I could just take.
Have to be something really good. You can't do it on the weekend.
Yeah, half a day off, I will.
So how about Wednesdays?
I'm not the, you guys are the difficult ones.
How about Wednesday?
It depends on the Wednesday, but. It depends on the Wednesday, but.
I mean, November sixth?
That works for me.
That works for me.
And and what, were we doing eight AM to noon?
No. No.
So can you do the?
Probably noon, like one to five or noon to five or something.
You could try, you have an appointment at what time?
Two thirty, but I.
For how long?
Possibly can change it, one hour.
So if you guys met, we could have dinner and stuff, too. You could go kind of in from late afternoon into a little bit of evening.
That'd be fine.
You guys like uh four o'clock, four PM to.
Like four to eight, kinda?
Four to eight type of thing.
Just do that on the sixth.
Yeah.
So four to eight, November sixth.
Going once, going twice.
Okay, so tell me the day again.
November sixth.
November sixth, four to eight.
Four to eight.
Four. Four to eight, so that's not gonna bother you at all, hardly, it's very little. No, I can work around.
Can I borrow, I need to get one of them handy dandy notepads to everybody.
Well, here, I have two. Okay, so November sixth, four to eight.
November.
So hopefully that works with Tony.
Sixth.
Yes, I'll try to figure out a way. Trust me, Tony. Four and to eight PM.
Four.
And are we doing it here?
Mm-hmm. Um, I might try to take us out of here and go over to the lodge or something like that.
Okay.
I might, because that gets you out of your normal environment, just a little bit of changing.
That's good, I do. Okay.
Okay, um so quick update, pharmacy, Loretta and Pam is on back order, but Suzanne's got a plan um for back medicine for that. Um MRI contract was signed for additional three years, they're gonna honor the current rate for a year and then increase it by three percent after that. Uh polyligate is the new infection prevention. Tammy Douding is a emergency coordinator and trauma coordinator, um working with providers for man or weekend X-rays. Um quality, uh Danal is gonna be working on wristband surveillance project, making sure that all the patients have wristbands that are electric ball and all the ER patients have wristbands. Um home health just wants to make sure that patients are notified in a timely manner with uh schedule changes. Suzanne's working on the packaging machine, there should be somebody from from Carada here next week to help with Donna um to do a run from start to finish, so if there's any bugs that can let those out. Um HR is working on annual performance reviews and job descriptions. We currently got three local providers at the clinic, six CNAs at the manor, one RN and one CNA coming to the team care. Um Jim's working with Monument Health to get reports for billing purposes, and Paul wants to do film with Blue Clinic on October thirtieth. That was that.
And then we got, oh, we just got the ACR certification today for their radiology, for their mammograms. So I know that one because Keisha went running up and down the halls.
She's had a good couple of days.
Yeah, she's like, she's, we may have to put something to tie her down now, she's like a balloon, so.
Okay, are we up for saying that?
Yeah.
Well, census was on the uptick for us, and of us last week, we lost three in the last week, so. So but on the the good news with that, we, when I had written this, we had three referrals, but two more just came in, so we had five. So we're we're still looking on the up and positive. So um our current CMS star ranking is two overall, we are at three on health inspections. That may be changing up a little bit the next quarter. Uh two star on quality measures, so we're really picking in on that. So we got quite a few quality projects.
We were one stars before.
Two stars out of.
Alright, alright, so and then our staffing level is a one star, but that will be changing to a four star at least. So we haven't been getting our uh staffing ratios incorrectly, so this next quarter, we will get that all corrected.
So if that's just a paperwork problem.
Yeah, so yeah, staffing is actually looking pretty good, so.
A lot of our star stuff is just paperwork, yeah.
Yeah, so that's what I'm focusing on a lot of that, cause yeah, what looks sees all that, so. So uh staffing wise, it's CNAs, we have six, seven CNA openings right now, but that's all being covered with agency. So when it comes to any referrals and stuff, there's no reason to say people right now.
Do we offer CNA class?
Yes, we just, we just got done with one that was.
I had six in it, but three of them were ours, three of them on.
Oh, okay.
So that should be improving with that.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, good job.
And we'll just plan on, we'll plan on doing a manor tour before the November meeting.
You want to?
I was thinking about that the other day.
Yeah.
You all are are welcome to go home, or you can stay, whichever you like.
The November meeting's the twenty-first, right? So just, that's the third Thursday. I'm having the twenty second.
Is that the day before Thanksgiving?
Uh, no.
It has to be the week.
It's the week before Thanksgiving. Thanksgiving's late.
When Grace is ready for us.
Yeah, you probably will.
You don't know who's getting married.
You probably won't.
Alright, so now, um you guys want your break real quick?
Do you? You guys care, I can take a quick break. It'll be, I know you've waited already for an hour, but it will, we will try to make it fast and be ready to go in five minutes. This is reality for them about how boring these are. Yes.
Alright.
We tried to be fast. See you guys later. Take care. Appreciate you.
Thanks, guys.
So you go or stay.
They're going anyway.
Go home, you can go home. What if I said eat here, wait for the morning?
Oh, he is.
Good job, thank you.
He should, he should be at the hospital.
Thank you so much. Still very glad.
Good work on that retail pharmacy thing.
Yeah, just, you know, I think she, to be honest, I tried to.
Oh, and he was on the foundation board. Oh, yeah.
I'm gonna hurt him. So I can't say that I'm a genius, but I did see it as a savings for us, we thought it would be great.
Yeah, for sure.
Kathy's a genius behind it all.
Oh, well, sorry. Good work, Kathy. Good work, everybody.
We're happy she's here.
Yeah, that's fine.
I cannot.
Thank you.
Touch this thing off and then I have to keep it awake. Drives me crazy.
Yeah, it's in the fridge there. It's in my fridge. Thank you for your patience tonight. Have a good night. Yeah, I'm sure. I'm gonna be fine. I'm used to being here till whenever. Yeah, well.
This thing, I'm glad we were, we hired JT.
He, we really, he really worked, worked some uh plans in there. Was very, very creative. Well, we did a good job of collaborating as a team and working on that stuff, and we spent a lot of hours figuring out what we were spending and.
Yeah, that's a lot of work, it's.
So I was thinking about CNAs for the manor.
Yeah.
Um and just the cost compares of travelers. I think if we gave some healthcare vouchers, we probably, and I don't know, we're having costs to work out. We maybe could find all the CNAs we needed, like that, I don't know.
Well, sometimes you can buy slots for daycare. So you'll buy a spot or two or three or whatever, and you guarantee those spots every month, and then you have two staff. Fill in.
What's left for the.
Their needs are, what their needs are. That way it doesn't come out as a tax, it's not a tax.
You know, this is just a thought, but I'd like to see the hospital. Um, I teach a health science class at the high school. And we had kids doing CNA classes, and Sundance was the one that would come over and train them. I'd like to be able to bring them here. And then maybe they would.
Right, want to work here then, right.
Well, that's a great idea.
So I would kinda like to see that.
But we should make that happen.
Yes, that that's Kim, Charfa and Jessie do the trains, so um.
Oh, I s- I stole your whole folder.
And I would love them to, I mean, I'd be willing to bring them here to the train.
That'd be great.
So who do I need?
Kim.
You don't want to use now?
No, I've already, I've already, I had one and I've already got rid of it.
Have everybody, is that people I do?
We do.
Hello, um now I'm terrified, there's one thing on the agenda, if I can do it quickly. If I may make my motion, and if I get a second, then I will explain the reason for my motion. Um my motion is for the chair, CEO and attorney to resume their Monday meetings.
So at least monthly, at least. Yeah, monthly, at least, for the agenda.
Um the reason for it is for the agenda and because I feel as a board member that when those meetings were happening, there was more and better communication with the whole board. Um so I would like to ask that um those meetings resume.
I would definitely appreciate that. Kathy and I were talking about that today. We are ready to get those going. And you're wanting to do a monthly? Is that what you're thinking? Well, it's what I'd like to do is the meet, the Monday before the meeting. So even if we have a special meeting, it might be nice to do it, you know, but but for sure on that, the week of the regular meetings, it is, it's just, it just makes the, to do the agenda is what is primarily thinking. We had multiple miscommunications this week. And it was horrible. It was bad.
I just felt like overall communication from Kathy and to all of us board members was better. Um, so I just felt like we're missing some things, and I would like to see that resume.
I would like to see it. Do I have to do it? Does, is there a second? So is there any more discussion? Yeah, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed the same?
The new store, this is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootleggers liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnut. It's amazing what this area has done, totally amazing.
Yeah, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed the same? We will try to do better.
Nathan, did you abstain?
Oh, I just got distracted. I I guess I'm an aye on that for the yes. What's that?
Affirmative? I'm just teasing that.
Okay, so um first off, you guys, I do apologize. One, I was really intending for you guys to be invited to come at five thirty. Um, so you could just be here for the whole. We were planning, figuring on doing it is having, um, we're just gonna stick your names in a hat and then and ask, and and we'll just pull you in from the cafeteria and and ask everybody the same questions. Um, so we'll just figure out the order right now. Oh, how does that work with Leonard? I wonder. Well, we'll just. Well, we don't have a hat.
Yeah.
Yeah, she has a hat.
This is the Midwest and County Hospital services, great.
I love it.
Leonard would just pull the order and.
Bless him with Leonard, I can text him and we're ready for him.
Oh, sure.
That would work, that would work.
My way. Yeah, I'm I'm a neutral party. Henry.
First that. First one here.
Okay, Henry, do you want me to pull? Second will be Leonard. Ronald. Norma. And I'm sorry to Benjamin because he's the last one, he's, you know, I got one more.
So.
Uh William, so William, I will apologize to.
Okay, so Benjamin is five and William is six, okay. Six.
Six.
And who's number six?
William.
William. Okay, so Henry to start, huh? So then, okay, Leonard, I'm going to take you off, but I will.
Thank you guys for, and by the way, thank you for your patience. Welcome.
Just right around the corner, down the hall.
And there's coffee in there and ice water.
Yep, and I'll come get you.
Do they want to take some of this? I don't know.
Back in, are you?
I'm gonna put you in a waiting room and I'll let you know when it's time for you to go back in.
Alright.
You're second, so. Okay.
Why don't you come?
Yeah, come up here.
At the table.
Yeah. Can we close the doors? No.
Yeah.
Cause it's open, it's a public meeting.
Let's close that one, but leave the other one.
That way.
Yeah.
Yeah. Following the rules.
I think we're going to be alright with that one. I don't have.
Yeah.
Okay.
You've had a long day waiting for us, haven't you?
Yeah, I got a little cranky. I apologize to you.
I got a little cranky, too.
We had a cranky day, but uh, okay, so, so first thing is this, we'd like you to tell, tell us about yourself and why we'd like to join the board at this time, and what is, what is your connection to the hospital? Say your connection to the hospital. That's the first, first question with three parts.
Three parts, okay, I may have to ask you to repeat.
That's okay.
Alright, uh my name's Henry Nessel. I'm actually born and raised in Washington DC. Lived uh just in the suburbs of Maryland, then moved to the suburbs of Virginia, and the area went absolutely, in my opinion, stupid. And I moved out this way following a friend of mine in uh at East Virginia. And this has been a great area. My, what I feel my qualifications are is I have worked with contracts many times, and I've worked with very large budgets. Uh in federal government, I was a contract office representative working under the FAR, which is the Federal Acquisition Regulations. Only a book about this thick. It's unbelievable, the rules you have to go by. Um, I've already taken my Wyoming training for audit and building better boards, and I actually had the training through here, uh dealing with the Wyoming audit training again. Okay, that's one part. What's, oh, my relationship to the hospital. Patient, I've been a patient here now many and multiple times. What I was told initially about this hospital is not what I have found out. I came in initially in a cardiac rhythm that was most uncomfortable, was given medications and the blood work found that it was not an MI, so I went back home. Then that exact same thing happened again and then again, but the only. Then that exact same thing happened again and then again, but the only problem was getting driven from my house down to here. Still, um, patient and I found this place to be a place that is needed in this community. And some of the things I heard yesterday at the town hall can concern me, especially dealing with funding. I mean, changing, uh, your status depending upon what's gonna happen in an upcoming election. Let's see, um, I, I want this place here. I want it here. I want it viable. Cause people like me need it. Uh, I've had treatments now that my heart is no longer acting up. So that's great.
Yeah.
But, uh, it took a bit to find it. And there was another part to the question.
So you told, you told us by yourself, um, why you'd like to join the board.
Why would I like to join the board is because I want this place to be viable. And I have that experience dealing with contracts and dealing with large money. I mean, the, my first twenty plus year career was in fire and rescue. I took it on myself as a paramedic, one of the first paramedics in Maryland. They actually call us charters. And I did that till nineteen ninety-four when I was retired because of injury. My training medically was suburban hospital, Holy Cross Hospital, and Mulderfield Army Hospital. And I was constantly in there with clinical, did seven years in the correctional environment as a PA. Yeah, it's, I've got a medical background and then when my retirement came about unexpectedly, I went into federal service and found myself as a technical officer, technical information officer and contracting officer representative. So in all honesty, I've never worked a day in my life. I've had too darn much fun. And I hope that I can continue that even here. This, this sounded very painful, might put me in that painful. But you're dealing with money and I mean, you did the IT stuff up here and that's what I was doing with Fed was IT. I mean, as he's rolling through that, like, give me more technical, cause that's what I was working with, give me more technical. And you were talking about costs and I'm gonna go with my pre-retirement from Fed, which is twenty fifteen. Uh, we had three, three computers on our desks. Each one had a different function. I worked in the classified world. The federal government spent eight thousand dollars a month per desk for, for the computer system. I don't know what you're spending here, but that's what it was costing us there. And we also were looking into reduced costs because it was just hugely expensive. So I understand that and I understand trying to get things going. I mean, it's making me nuts. I have no service. You know, what's going on with the service systems? Is it an actual server failure? Is it a hack? My brain says hack instantly because I, I know where those folks are hacking. But just a little bit of my background, I mean, I've gotten a very extensive federal background. I'm very much self-educated and that was my primary education is in pre-hospital emergency care.
Good, um, or how, so how would you ensure open communication and transparency between the board, hospital staff, and the community, community that we serve?
That's an interesting question. Now, sitting on this board, I have no idea what you're doing right now, but, uh, the biggest thing, and this is what I've heard for literally forty years of employment, is communication and how hard it is. Uh, you were talking about, let's say, your management structure. The way I was doing it before was as the branch chief, I would talk to my team chiefs and my team chiefs would talk to their teams and then it would come back up, but also the individual teams were able to come to my office. I had no door policy. I was not allowed to give any of my information to the community. Sorry about that. I was in the classified world. But, uh, in the community, you're on, you're on the internet. You have a Facebook page, you have a web presence. That's, in today's younger society, that's excellent, but in the old society, print media is still the way to go. And so you may find having to publish a monthly print newsletter for the people in my age group. Not for me particularly, I, I use IT, but there are many that don't. And it's gonna take multiple forms of communication. The communication's gotta be bilateral. It's gotta be both ways. And when someone talks to you, you gotta listen to them. If their idea is, or their thought or complaint is valid, then work with it. If it's not valid, calm them down. I mean, when I first started here, as I said, mentioned, I heard some horrible things about this place. And I am glad to say they are not reality, but we've gotta get reality out there, not the rumor.
Um, what do you think that, you've kind of gotten this, where it got to this, but what do you think the current state of the hospital is? What do you think needs to change? And what skills or experience do you have that would help with that change?
What I see this lady doing in the past two days of listening to her and listening to what's going on is far better than I've heard over my almost five years of living in Newcastle. The budget work you're doing, getting this place back in line money-wise, cause money is your lifeblood. And you've gotta have your reimbursements. I understand Medicare reimbursements and how poor they could be and also Blue Cross reimbursements cause of my own insurance, which is Medicare and Blue Cross, and I watch what the billing is versus that. I'm gonna ask, what was the second part of that question?
So, uh, what do you, what do you think needs to change?
It's changing.
Yeah.
And I mean, right now it's changing. Once you, once you know your financials, once you have, you understand the staff is, is happier. That makes a big difference. There's not the feeling of threats. There's not all this other overtures of undertow that's going on. Once you have that, understand that's being taken care of, you're moving right along and that's really helping the hospital. The biggest thing that I've been hearing is the money and I've been hearing that for a very long time and I'm hearing it change. I'm hearing it change quickly. Which is refreshing because I, as I say, personally, I need this hospital here. I can't drive ninety minutes in SVT to go get a DZ. Especially if Campbell County is busy off doing something else.
Um, what skills or experience do you have that would help with that change?
Again, I'm a contract, well, it's, and the certification is no longer available, but I was contracting office representative level two. That allowed me to go into tens of millions of dollars in individual contracts that I worked on, that I monitored, that I actually oversaw and approved or disapproved funding for. I angered many a contractor to the federal government because I made him stick to the paperwork and being able to read some of those contracts is difficult, but the contracting passed. I'm listening to tonight to issues with contracts, especially that rogue bill that came in. I'm, I own a small business. It's a little, a little gun company. I get these rogue bills all the time and I've gotta go back through it. Did I really order that? Is that really a valid bill? It's gotten to the point, billing wise, I've actually taken my credit cards off PayPal because people were frauding my PayPal account from my business. So she's monitoring it. She's working it. You have a CFO coming in that sounds like they're really gonna work, work this to make it even better. All I can say is from what I've seen the last time to now, and I say last time, I was here for the fiasco of that, what that occurred before the last.
That nasty meeting.
Stuck my head in. Uh, anyway, um, big turnaround. And it's a change for the better and I think I can help especially in that money and contractor realm. Also your technical stuff, as I say, I wanted more tech out of that guy.
It's my fault that I told him to kinda keep, not get too.
No, I appreciate you doing that.
Presentation was for you, not for me.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm standing in the back of the room, listening to a boy.
She made it.
Or maybe I could understand a third of it. Listening to presentations from contractors, cause you only got a couple hours of, but one we did at my office, it was a two-day event and it started eight in the morning and ended at five in the evening. Personally, I could add something to all this. And that really does help. My wife, it comes in here all the time for medical care and imagery and lab work. I get my lab work done here. I recently went through a nasty little scare medically and I thought you were feeding your vampire back there. But, uh, I'm glad you were feeding it because found out I didn't have what they said, what they thought I did.
That's good.
Very good. This, are, we have any, any other, anything else we need to add or do you have any questions for us?
It's past my bedtime.
We appreciate remedy.
Well, that's, that's my method. I'm, I'm direct. I'm to the point. I will listen intently and I may not say something, but beware, cause what I open my mouth, that something may come out that ruffle your feathers or not and that's just my style. I, I appreciate that. I wanted to, I wanted to. Problem, how do we resolve it? If you don't have a resolution, let's make one. And that's my style. In the Myers-Briggs, they called me a fixer.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thanks for all your time here.
Yes, thanks for your time and thanks for waiting and.
Yeah, we appreciate you coming to this. I appreciate you coming to the town hall meeting too.
And do you wanna do, because we're gonna make a vote. Um, I don't think you have to wait.
No.
I would, I would say you just let us, let you know.
Inform you.
That's not a problem.
Okay.
So whatever you wanna do, but.
Just, I'm gonna add on, it's eight, it's eight thirty now and my wife just finished up with a choral group that I was supposed to be singing in, so I'm gonna go meet her.
Oh, that's very, very good. Thank you, thank you.
You will get this.
Oh, Leonard's, so we'll be on soon.
Leonard's.
We'll be on soon. We'll get that.
So we'll come down and grab somebody as soon as we get done with them.
Is he in a waiting room?
Madam Chair, you were fourteen minutes.
Is it fourteen? You timed?
Did you accidentally disconnect?
Uh, it's one thing. We didn't tell them. I, we didn't tell them, but I, I wrote the time down. I've been watching that.
I was out there and I forgot, yeah.
But I, you know, I, I wasn't gonna cut them off, cause we didn't tell.
So. Oh, it comes in purple, yeah. Make, make sure you. Oh. I didn't, I didn't do a number. I, I have to, I might have to think.
You can do the numbers last if you want. It's just the numbers will help if there's a, if there's a tie. Add a little science.
Recipitating out.
I don't know.
It says Sarah, says be safe coming home, might be.
Yeah, she said it could be. Could be raining or snowing, but.
No, she's a very good cook, yeah.
I don't mind.
Okay, that's where I'm trying to find out where you are, so I will find you and I will let you in.
Did you ask her?
Uh, there it is. I found you.
One of my friends. Her car broke down, but I, I told her, I'm only a couple blocks away if she wants to walk and get my car.
Okay. Be back.
Leonard, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear?
We can.
We can.
Can you see me?
We cannot see you.
You can see me?
No.
You can't? Well, I don't know. I got, uh, well, I don't know what you do to make that happen. There's a, in the lower right-hand corner, there's a picture of, you know, a head and shoulders with my neck. And I'm poking at it, but nothing's happening.
It's, looks like a movie camera.
Yeah.
Okay, it looks like the movie cameras. Start video.
Yeah, try that.
Oh, that's where we, I'll, I'll push start video.
There you are. Now we can see you.
Now we can see you.
All right, I'm sorry. No.
I'm sorry that you can see me. Look at me.
Okay, Leonard, thank you for waiting for us for so long. I think the other guys think you're pretty lucky getting to wait in your own chair.
Yeah, well, yeah, it wasn't too bad at all, really.
So, um, so we're hoping to keep this to about fifteen minutes or so. And if, and the first thing, way we wanna start is for you to tell us about yourself and, um, and tell us why you'd like to join the board at this time and then what your connection is to the hospital.
Well, a little bit about myself, um, well, let's see, two weeks, we've lived here forty-one years in Newcastle. And, uh, I came over, uh, for a job at the First State Bank and my wife got into the school system right away. Um, see, where can I go with that? I came in, uh, I was an emergency medical technician and in the town I lived in before was what was a volunteer fireman. And so I spent, uh, kind of with the, uh, time I spent here as an EMT and a fireman. I had twenty-four years as a volunteer fireman and fifteen years as an emergency medical technician. And got to work with Don McCauley and joined car wrecks and transfers to Rapid City. Um, let's see, what else? Anyway, we, we liked it here and we stayed here. Our kids went to high school here. They're both University of Wyoming graduates. Um, and I think that's probably, probably about it. Like, in, in the time that we've lived here, I've served, served eighteen years on the, uh, on the Mondell Field Airport, board sixteen years on Northern Wyoming Mental Health Board, uh, a couple of times as, uh, as the president of the group. And, uh, my goodness, well, all kinds of, all kinds of, uh, I've, I've been a Lions Club member. We're trying to keep the Lions Club going. We can get you all signed up. We'll be very successful. So that, in my, hey, our contact with the hospital, you know, we, we, uh, my wife and I both recognized the need for a hospital in this town. And this is a very, this is a beautiful facility for our little community. Uh, if you go out and look at the, I think it's a wall of honor or something out in the, in the, uh, entryway by the nurse. And, um, where the, where the bathrooms are back there, you'll see my wife's and my name up there as donors financially to, to the hospital. I served on the hospital foundation board for one term, I think it was four years. And, uh, I, I know, I, for a long time, I could walk into the ER and everybody called me by my first name, but that's trickling down now. I think Chuck Franklin's the last one that, uh, that still calls me by my first name. And the ER has changed considerably, trust me. It's, it's really gotten, uh, a lot more privacy. The first people I hauled into the emergency room was up at the old hospital, which is now Mondell Heights. And, and so I think that briefly, that's, that's it. I've done a, a lot of things, but, uh, it takes a while to lay them all out.
Thank you. How, how would you ensure open communication and transparency between the board, the hospital staff, and the community?
How would I ensure open communication? Well, like, you know, if people, if people call me on the telephone, I'd certainly talk to them. And I would be, you know, I'm available, uh, with a home phone and a cell phone and, and, uh, uh, I don't have many trouble at all picking up the phone and answering it. I have a listed number at home. So you can look me up in the book and, and we're there. Open transparency, I, I, I believe strongly in, in, uh, being open to, to, uh, to the public and I, I, for one thing, I did forget, I was on the city council in the town we came from. Uh, the first term, I had to work at it a little bit. In the second term, I ran unopposed and I was running unopposed for the third term when we decided to move out here. And, and, uh, had some people, um, express their, that they were happy that I at least looked at their problems when they came to the council with it, with an issue they wanted to talk about.
How, um, what do you, what's, in your opinion, what do you think the current state of the hospital is? And what do you think needs to change? And what skills or experience do you have that would help with that change?
Um, I think, I think the hospital is, is heading in the right direction after a, a real low period. What can I do to, to help that? You know, I spent, uh, forty-eight and a half years in the finance business, the last, um, seven of them as the president of the First State Bank. And, uh, I looked at a lot of financial statements and, and that's what I'm really interested in with the, with the hospital, is to get some current financial statements and be able to, to see them. And I know you talked quite a bit tonight about different, different, uh, uh, facets of the financial statement. And it's fair, it's, you've got a lot of, a lot of different, uh, a lot of different pages, you might say, or a lot of different accounts to review. About like a, uh, FDIC, uh, report, that they kind of go on.
I was listening so good, I didn't listen. I was listening and listening to what you said, but did, did you catch, you s- you said the current state of the hospital, what, did you answer?
He said it was hitting me in the right way.
In the right direction, yeah.
Just listening to your meeting tonight, it sounds like you're getting a hold of some of the issues, uh. I like that you're looking at employee benefits and you've got some wonderful, wonderful people there. I'm real familiar with your physical therapy department and, and we do our, our, uh, prescription drugs through the, through the pharmacy there and, and we couldn't be happier.
Well, very good. Is there, are, do we have any more questions for them that you've got? Do you have some questions for us? Or something that?
Something that, well, I guess, yes, uh, what's the status of the, uh, of your financial statements? You know, there, there was some, there hadn't been a financial statement, uh, put together for some time. Are you getting a hold of that and getting some? There's a lot, I guess you haven't had anything, uh, uh, done very much in the last eighteen months. Are you catching up with that?
Kathy said tonight that she thinks we'll be caught up by the end of December.
Yeah.
Okay. And so then, uh, will those reports be available?
Yes, that's, that is the plan, to have those available so that we start the new year outright.
Okay, because I would like to, I would, I have some interest in the, in the period of time when, uh, Maureen left and you had, you brought a person in that only stayed a few weeks. And I know there should have, there was probably a lot of expense there, and then a lot of expense with this fellow. Uh, I guess everybody just referred to him as Randy, and I'd like to see how, how, how that fits into the whole thing and how you're gonna recover from that.
We're just working at it like crazy.
I, I can hear that. But that is good. And I'm sorry, I, I should have written some of these questions down. I, I wasn't really, uh, tuned in to how this was going to go, but as I told Denise, I, I'm suffering a cold and so, uh, so pardon me for being a little less than alert.
I think you've done a good job.
Yeah. We really appreciate your time. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It was nice to meet you.
All right, are you gonna cut me off then, Denise?
In a friendly way, she will.
You'll let, we'll let them know tomorrow?
Yeah, we'll let you know tomorrow.
Okay, that sounds good. Well, you've got some good candidates, let me tell you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right, good night.
Good night. You don't need to go get Ronald. Doesn't he look very Peter? We're being around the same age. How long was that?
Uh, we actually went over, we went over about three days, so that was a total, total went over, but that was trying to get back. No, I'm fine. A, part of that was our, some of that was our part fault or his fault by not knowing. I wouldn't know how to turn the camera on. I can't hold it for that.
Hello.
Yeah, hello. Hello.
Are we sitting, standing?
There you go, just so we can see you. So, thank you for your patience and waiting so long, we appreciate it.
No problem. It happens.
It does happen, no doubt now. So if you wouldn't mind just telling us about yourself and why you'd like to join the board and what your connection is to the hospital.
Okay. Uh, my connection to the hospital, first of all, is I want one. So, and the, uh, the main reason is to, I've been volunteering for a long time in a couple other different areas and, uh, the, the one thing that brought me in is because at first, when this opening happened, it seemed like nobody was rushing in here. So, which I was kind of surprised because there were so many people that were bashing the hospital and telling you this, and I'm surprised that those people, they don't tend to show up, you know? So, anyway, at least I hope that I could come in and give you, you know, just some more variety in the, in the swing of things. Uh, my background is, I started out as a orderly when I worked in a hospital in Philadelphia when I was in my high school. And I moved in and became a nurse's aide, and then I went to respiratory therapy school. So I became a respiratory therapist. I did four years of clinical as a staff person and four years running a department. So I was the director of, uh, respiratory care at a three-hundred-bed hospital. And did that for, that was after, that was about eight years. And I decided, I didn't want to be an administrator, so I went into sales. So I sold respiratory and anesthesia equipment, uh, got involved heavily with neonatal products, uh, did a lot of work with that. And it got me to travel pretty much all over the country, I got to Europe a few times, so sales was good to me. Uh, and just to back up a little bit on my history, I've lived here for about four years, moved from the Philadelphia area, can't tell by my accent. And actually went to high school with Sylvester Stallone, so, anyway. In my time was a respiratory therapist director, I was a board member for the American Lung Association Group. And I was also an officer in the American Association of Respiratory Care, our regional group there. So I was, had a couple of experiences working on boards before. After that, I actually went into pharmaceutical equipment and sold in that industry for thirteen years. And took a break, I became a volunteer firefighter about twenty years ago, actually jumped in and sold firefighting equipment for three or four years, just to take a little bit of change. Did a little more medical stuff and then I retired. I still do some consulting work with cardiology equipment and that's my background.
Again, I respect him coming into the Lions, then Weston County is notoriously conservative. And JD came in and stood at the front of a room where he knew he was in the minority and took questions, which is better than I can say for others from, from that wing of the party. That's my, my problem. So, so, you know, Chip not getting a chance to respond, hey, true no fault of our own or no fault of the Freedom Caucus, because the Freedom Caucus shows up, they've kind of had the stage to themselves. But for JD Williams to do something that, that, sorry, that, you know, Ogden wouldn't do, um, you know, Liz Cheney wouldn't do, I mean, who he gets lumped in with. He came, he came right up and, and he saw people and he talked to people.
I still do some consulting work with cardiology equipment and that's my background. So, like I said, main reason to come to this meeting is to say, I think I have some good knowledge, some good experience that could help out. And, uh, I enjoyed volunteering, so.
So how would you ensure open communication and transparency between the board, the hospital staff, and the community?
Well, after listening to some of the things here tonight, I think you've pretty much got that wrapped up because the things you've talked about with the, uh, town hall, uh, the types of information going back and forth, that, uh, you know, the, the chairman of the board is, the, uh, the board's conduit to what goes on in the hospital and that's pretty much it.
So what do you think the current state of the hospital is? And what do you think needs to change? And what skills or experiences do you have to help change?
Well, in my short time of being here, I know there's a lot of people in the community that don't come here and go somewhere else. And I heard that from, from day one when we moved out here. So I think the challenge is to, you know, get the community to trust what's going on with the hospital and, uh, needless to say, you know, there was a a lot of things in the town need change and help, and a lot of people don't like change. But I think the, uh, the hospital has changed in the last four years because you had a long-term, with twelve or thirteen years of, of one type of management. And I think, uh, two of you were already here and the changes you made to start looking in a new direction have, have happened. But getting the message out to the people that, you know, they want to come here. Being in sales, you know, you have lots of places to go to buy things. And the main thing you want to do is, once you get a customer, you never want them to go anywhere else. Because your repeat business is what keeps you going. And, you know, that's one of the things. If you notice, you know, in some of the bigger areas, I mean, the advertising and the programs and the, the information being thrown out on TV and the radio, you know, the whole hospital industry has changed dramatically. And especially with rural places, and if you're not on the ball, the ball's gonna get dropped. So, the one thing that, that, and I'll give you my, my one free thing for today that I think would be pretty important to do, that I would look to do, is started talking about the CNAs and the number of people you have to pay here from outside. Back in the middle of my hospital career and, and sales, you know, the respiratory therapy business started to get crazy. And the one thing people started to do was recruiting. Recruiting programs, not where you just put an ad in the paper, but you actually go out face-to-face to trade shows, to schools, to anything where there's a bunch of people that are looking for maybe a change and, but you're gonna have to sell them on coming here, because the pool here is so small. I mean, what's there, six hundred thousand people in Wyoming? Something like that, five and, something like that.
Yeah, I think count some of them twice.
The county I lived in had seven hundred thousand people, so, in one county. So that's the thing, I would say, somebody's got to get out there and doing it face-to-face, being there on the street, that makes a big difference. So, that would be my first recommendation. Get a recruiter out there, knocking on doors and somebody that can sell people to, to come here. So.
Do you have any questions for us?
No?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
It's nice to learn more about you. Thank you.
And we'll let you know tomorrow. I feel like you have to stay here all the rest of the night. We got ten.
Well, we did pretty good on that one again. I thought, I thought it was longer than that, but honestly, I wrote it down, I, unless I.
Yeah, I have my keys, so. No, I'll, I'll go through this and go into my office.
Hi, Norma, thank you for coming and waiting and everything. So if you could just.
Yeah.
Put it there now at the end so we can see you.
I'm usually in the hot seat.
Well, welcome back. So we just, the first, you know, first off, thank you. Thank you for waiting all night. You know, it's okay. So the first thing we would, was if you could tell us about yourself and why you'd like to join the, join the board right now and what is your connection to the hospital?
What's my connection? About twenty years. Let's see, what, what doesn't anybody know about me? I think everybody pretty much, well, he probably doesn't.
Anything about you much.
Well, I've sat on, sat on this board before.
Okay.
I have. And I worked with the foundation starting in two thousand and one.
Okay.
I've seen, I think, three capital campaigns of the foundation board. And, uh, I'm here because I was asked to come, um, but secondly, because I believe in this hospital and I want it to stay here. I think it's very important to our community and I just can't handle the thought that something could go wrong. And so, um, I'm fairly old. Actually, I'm old. But I'm still on my, still on my feet and doing a lot of volunteer work and, and, uh, but I did get a, a call from a community member asking me if I'd please come down here and try to get back on the board. So you can ask me whatever you'd like.
How would you ensure open communication trans- and transparency between the board, the hospital staff, and the community?
How would I ensure it?
Not for sure, sorry.
Well, that's okay.
Foster it.
Yeah. Well, I believe in open communication. I think that's necessary. I think there's been a time here when we didn't have it and it caused quite a bit of problems with our employees. And so, uh, I think it's very important, uh, I think certain things probably have to come from the CEO. But, um, I think that transparency is very big. And I, and I would not want to see this hospital get back in the good graces of this community.
So what do you think the current state of the hospital is? What do you think needs to change? And what skills or experiences do you have that would help with that change?
Well, I, I think we've already seen a change. I feel we have, uh, with the new board and with the CEO. I'm pretty sure that I've heard nothing but good things about the CEO and, uh, the employees seem much happier. And I think that's very, very important that we keep our staff happy. And I understand too that that's not always easy with women, having worked in a, um, job where we had three hundred women. And it's just a different working environment because we fester, men just talk it over right away. And so I think you've done a really good job in going, getting our employees back where they should probably be.
They're good people.
Yes, I know they are. And I don't really know, uh, I had thirteen and a half years' experience in the doctor's office. Uh, I've had some board experience here. And, uh, I care about this facility and I care about this community. I would give it everything I had.
Is there any more questions?
I think I know everyone here except the gentleman at the end.
Hi, Norma, I'm Nathan.
I knew you were Nathan. I've zoomed in on a lot of your meetings, but I never had the privilege of meeting you.
I do have one question for you, Norma. What, when were you on the board last? Do you recall what years you were on?
Or maybe just how, what was your?
Yeah.
How long were you on the board?
Well, I started in two thousand and one and my last, let me think who my last CEO was.
Were you? Were you on right before Carrie and I got on?
No, no, I've been off. But I was, I was probably still around with the foundation. I can't remember what my last year was. Well, I can tell you who we had, it was Kay Garcia.
Oh, wow. So that was the CEO before Maureen, right? Kay?
She was our biggest nightmare. Bob reminded me of that.
Norma, what did you do when you were working? You said you worked in the doctor's office.
I did, I was office manager in the doctor's office for thirteen and a half years. And then I had to move because of, pardon me?
Cedar Hills or?
No, in Nebraska. I had to move all the time with my husband, so I've had numerous jobs. Like I worked six and a half years in attorney's office, thirteen, you know, and then I just wherever Jim got transferred, I had to find some work.
Do you have any questions for us?
No. I've been following you.
I won't ask the criticism.
I'm not going to give it. Actually, I'm kind of happy with the new board, actually.
Well, we're glad to hear that. And we really thank you for coming in.
Well, thanks for giving me the opportunity.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
I'll probably see you in November when we put the wreaths up.
That'd be great.
And we'll let you know tomorrow.
Okay.
What we figure out.
Okay.
Anyway, we do.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Nice meeting you.
Thank you so much.
I just don't get lost.
Well, I can show you the way if you need it. Yeah. When we get done with this, we have to tell everybody. We appreciate it.
I was just going to say about.
Thank you, no?
Yeah, maybe we should get a card and have us all sign a thank you card to all.
That would be nice, you know. I'm really happy that they're, well.
Isn't it nice to hear?
Well, about the change they're seeing.
Good too.
Where would you like?
Thanks for waiting on us.
No problem.
We'd like to tell you this is the latest review.
No, I heard otherwise.
I bet he knows better.
I knew that would be a fit.
Okay, well, so I'm just going to go through some questions.
Okay.
So the first thing is that we'd like you to tell us about yourself and why you'd like to join the board and what is your connection to the hospital?
Okay. So I've lived here now for almost four years. I'm the pastor of the First Baptist Church. But that is now what brought me here. I actually came here to retire completely from, I retired from the government and also from the army. And so when my career was done, we moved here, bought a house that we loved dearly and thought that was going to be it, but that is the way it went. So anyway, much about that, my career has to do with kind of a variety of things. I ended up first in the medical field as a medic in military, went from that into the intelligence field and the infantry, went into that knowing that that was not going to last forever and started getting my education, went into the business side of things. So I have an MBA from Norwich University in finance. And I also have a Master of Divinity from Liberty University with a concentration there as a chaplain, actually not as a pastor. But and with all this makes me pretty diverse. I have a lot of different interests, a lot of different things that I've done along the way. I've been a director, a finance director for a pretty large nonprofit in Park City, Utah. And I was also the compliance director for the city of Salt Lake. So I've had those jobs after, after I left active duty military, went in the reserves and ended up getting called back to go to Iraq. I spent two combat tours in Iraq and then finally got to retire. Reason for wanting to be on this board is simply the importance this hospital is. I mean, this community, as I was just talking with others, we very much agree that without this hospital, this community would be lacking so much that it would, it would be not only detrimental to those who live here and want to remain here, but it would be detrimental for anybody wanting to come here and to be, make this their home. So that's a big part of it. My tie to this hospital really is, I've had my care here a few times. But the main reason is because the ministry that we do into the, into the manner. And so I spend a lot of time, a lot of Sundays doing service there and get to know the staff, got to know a lot of people that are there. And that's just kind of provided that tie and that importance. So again, wanting to keep this, this is a a growing enterprise that is able to survive for a long period. Now, I will say that most, I get most of my care at the VA, but I still do a lot of services here too.
How would you ensure open communication between? Sorry, how would you ensure open communication transparency between the board, the hospital staff?
Well, let me first say that I very much enjoy the fact being able to experience your meeting here a little bit. It seems like, and I'll just, my own assessments, a lot's changed in the time that I first started watching and got interested in the board. It seems like a lot more, I hate to use the term, but positive flow coming from this. And that's good. And I think that transparency is really most important. Understand what is that relationship between CEO, senior staff, the leadership of the hospital itself, how that relates to the board, and then how that relates to the employees. And it can never be a situation where one is being held and one's talking and the other's not, or that the conversation's being, being blocking each other. So there must be a relationship that's held and looked towards always being open to that conversation, always being open to that feedback coming back, always having conversation with leadership that can be absolutely transparent. I will say too that I do like the fact that the hospital has the rules, the requirements to be open to the public too. Because that, I mean, we all know that what the rumors are that are out there. We all know that some of the things that are said about that just are not true about the board, about leadership, about the hospital staff. These things need to get out there and that relationship of getting it into the newspaper, getting into having people intermingle with and talk to the public and be able to provide that information is absolutely critical, especially in a small town like this where a rumor can blow up into a major catastrophe in any moment. We did this a lot with the church. One little rumor will start like that. Putting out fires. So yes, I think it's just a concentration on a professional relationship right here amongst everybody, a professional relationship with everybody that's involved. And then just making sure that that flow doesn't get impeded by anything along the way.
So what do you think the current state of the hospital is? What do you think needs to change? And what skills or experience do you have that would help with that change?
Let me take that, I might ask you to repeat that all night.
Yes, that's fine.
So the current state, the current state, I would say rapidly improving from what I can, what I can take from what I hear in the public. A few months ago, it didn't seem like that was near the statements being made. It was nothing but negative, negative, negative. And so I praise you guys for the work that you're doing because obviously you're moving the tide a little bit. My own perception really at that time was the hospital wasn't bad anyway. I never had any bad interaction with it. But I did always kind of get the fact that staffing was issues and things like that. It's all coming back around. What was the next part of your question?
What do you think needs to change? And what skills or experience do you bring to help with that?
Well, I think you get, from what I can tell, you guys are moving and getting on top of the things that I think maybe not change as much as I would say continue to improve. These details such as the employee benefits, the understanding of the financials and getting on top of them, the audits, putting processes in place that are pretty clear-cut, that everybody can understand and not be one of these things that only one person gets it and that person leaves and no longer. The institutional memory, if you will. All these things just need to be improved upon and it has to be a steady state of really having the right people continuing to do and not having this constant turnover, constant controversy that leads for people wanting to leave and go selflessly else. So I think that just to continue an improvement and the steady, not, what I bring to it is a lot of experience, a lot of organizational experience of leadership. Now, while I've kind of been a little bit more out of that for a little period of time, I still have had a lot of experience in larger organizations. When I worked for the government, State Department, I ran an organization of seven hundred people and in Jordan. And so a larger, large organizations with a lot of moving parts and just being able to provide experience and knowledge alongside each one of you to be able to fill in where there's any weakness. And I never am one of these people that want to to take over or to move in or to set up a fiefdom in any way. It's always trying to move in and help where I can and to fill in and her being that everybody shines at the same and the community comes to really embrace what the hospital should be.
Do we have any more questions? Do you have questions for us?
I do not. Like I said, I would just like to keep encouraging no matter who gets selected. Or, I mean, it's great to see you guys at work and great to see that things are improving. I know there's a lot of work going into it, so my hat is off to you. And my prayers continue for each of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much. Thanks for all your time.
I heard today statistically, at People's Daily lies or untrue spread eight times faster than truths. It's what they said on the radio.
I can believe that.
Now, I don't know whether that's because of Facebook because everybody wants to hear something negative on Facebook about somebody else. You know?
I just.
Eight times statistically.
I also heard on a program that it used to be that to not tell the truth was very, it was bad.
Yes.
And now it's not so bad. It's bad, but people accepted a lot easier. Yeah. And it used to be. They accepted it. Yeah, it's just, well, he didn't tell the truth, but that's okay because.
Well, you know.
It is very sad, but I think that's kind of helps.
In my day and age, if you were called a liar.
I've been having it going to the head so we can see you.
Yeah, that's the one. Thanks for all your time.
Yes, thank you very much for for holding out for us.
Well, you guys put in a lot of time.
So we'll just ask you some questions and then we'll take about fifteen minutes. So the first one is, is tell us about yourself. Why would, and why would you like to join the board? And what is your connection to the hospital? It's three-parter. I think they all are. You have three questions with the conversation.
Three questions with nine answers.
Well, I'm William Curley. Grew up, I'm a New Englander. Came out in seventy-three, first time I stepped foot in Wyoming, in Weston County too. Took me a long time to move here, but I've been in the state and other places for a long time. Got overeducated. Was lucky, studied philosophy for a number of years and got my degrees. Then decided to get something that might be useful, so I got a law degree, which it is. So I'm glad I did that, especially in America where everything goes to law. Turned out to be handy to do. I didn't realize that. My grandfather was a surgeon. Used to do, when I was a little kid, trail down the hospital hall with him when we ducked in the rooms. Then with my dad, who was a surgeon. I've got a son that's a surgeon, a daughter that's a pathologist for, pediatric pathologist, I think. Just young people. Sister that ran the outpatient clinic for Yale University for years in New Haven. So I've and there's others. And I've been around medical people most of my life. So they actually seem normal to me. And I sit in the chair tonight for the same reason I ran for the board. I've lived here long enough and attained an age from which, a perspective of age from which I know this hospital is important and its loss would be a hell of a blow to the community. I, everyone's got their story, so that all crystallized. One night, and my wife's still mad at me for years. I was having a heart attack, I got in the truck and drove over to the hospital or I wouldn't be here. It'd be a shame if, I mean, it'd be devastating to the community. It was. I think the hospital's statement of values includes, we want competent staff that gets along with people. And I think I've been in the community not long enough to have some grasp of why that is there. You want medical services that are reasonable. But I read to be, understand that it's not exorbitant. And you want to ensure that as a board member, the long-term viability of the hospital, which to me means dollars. If, don't skip the first two. Those are great, but then you'd want, got to have money. And I saw you guys nashing your teeth over money for the time I was here, and you must have started that at five thirty. And I was not pleased to, when I finally came to the realization that, at least I thought that things had gotten to the point where it was the hospital vision where there was not a sufficient grasp of financials. Lastly, as far as I know, I would be able to work with everyone on the board. I've, again, long enough to know I win some, I lose some. You have to, when you're outvoted, then that's that. And you go on to the next thing. You do not undercut the board by becoming a problem. The board loses strength when it does that. Everybody has to work together.
So how would you ensure open communication and transparency between the board, the hospital staff, and the community?
How would I ensure it?
How about, I think foster would be a better word. Ensure, it should be foster.
Well, with the community, there does seem, the hospital seems to have this year upped its game at community relations. But there's a lot of things I'm unaware. But there's a lot of things I'm unaware of that that goes on. But it's key. You mentioned uh having training, somebody mentioned getting the kids to come in with CNA. I mean, all of those things. Once you say, once you, somebody thinks of them like yourself and then you go, oh, well, actually, that is a good idea. Though they need to be fostered and and uh and supported. I heard board members that had made the last um community event were thanked for showing up. It's important. With the staff, I know quite a few of them on a personal basis. I think the key to good communication is honesty, so you need to know what you can not talk about as a board member.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
I think the key to good communication is honesty, so you need to know what you can not talk about as a board member. But if you can talk about it, then if you, and do, you need to be honest. People smell when you're not being straight with them. Did I miss something? Oh, by the way, I, it wasn't allowed a preface, but I figured since I'm last, a good preface would have been, I probably won't improve on anybody's finger. I set my own standard.
Okay, um so the last set of questions. Um, what do you think the current state of the hospital is? What do you think needs to change? What skills or experiences do you have that would help with that change?
Well, I've I've already stated, so we stayed finances. I noticed uh when I had to work with the board of commissioners that the good commissioners know the budget.
That's right.
Right. And I, so I'm guessing that it would be similar for this board.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so that means I I'm good with numbers, but I have a lot to learn about being able to read the profit and loss for an institution like this. So uh I would have a learning curve, but I'm motivated to make it and uh got sources that will help with that. I, I am a licensed attorney in Wyoming, so I I know some of the flip of the law, plus I know with some clarity, some of the stuff I don't know. The HIPAA monstrosity. I've actually I never worked for a hospital, but I I've done some CLE over the years with the HIPAA, not much, but some, and it's scary. Then to compare with what actually happens, what the law says, and then what the institutions have put up with, I'm familiar with open meeting, open recorders laws. And I, and I, and I, I believe my view, you'd have to vouch for me or tell me I'm wrong, but I think the properties of the law is, if you, is to help things get done and people get along, not to put a thumb down. Well, I know because I that's wrong. So I would bring that to the table. I guess I might as well. According to my wife, I haven't yet become mentally incompetent, so still fairly sharp. And I like to discuss things and hear them discussed and listen to other people. It's the only way you find out if you've got a good idea. Is to let, see what other people do with it. I did.
Do you have any, any, is there any more questions? Do you have any questions for us?
How many of you would recommend strongly that nobody ever applied to be on this board? I don't expect an honest answer.
If you'd asked that a couple of months ago, I probably would have raised my hand. That's better.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
See ya.
You'll see a dapper. We'll let you know tomorrow.
If I was on the board, do not expect to see the.
Eleven thirty, I I'm still wearing a tie there, you know.
I took a lot of notes.
I took some notes. And I, I remember some people.
I just like to listen and watch people.
Yeah. A lot of people out there have a lot of different experiences. Thank you for holding your hand up, saying, yeah, I'll do it.
And they all had very good reasons for doing so.
Yes. Also happy that most of them are happy with what changes they see in the community, maybe in staff. Uh, I don't, I'm gonna give it over to Kathy.
That's a really nice thing to hear.
Yeah, yes, it is. Especially when you still feel like they're trying to dig out.
Where you, you are still.
You're making a difference, yeah, but you're making a difference.
But you've made big progress.
Thank you.
The, the mountain might be here, but you're, you're not down here anymore. You're at least, you know.
I have to say, employees are trying themselves.
Yes, they are.
Yeah, for sure.
Employees are working hard to make this better.
Yeah, I think they're buying in.
It's nice to hear that they show a difference from us too, and that's good. It's really good.
Could I brag on Kathy a little bit? So I went to the ten AM. I walk in the apartment. And I had.
Was that yesterday?
Yeah, yeah, a few people tell me after the fact, uh including Pipers. She's like, oh, I like her. Like, yeah, she's, and and that was a lot of praise coming from Betty. And I had a few other people tell me, and I think I heard Denise made her own video. And then at some point yesterday, it had seven hundred views.
Wow.
And Kristen Colbrand was watching some and liked what she was seeing, so.
We also had super good feedback at the ladies' night out too.
They do.
The feeling was great. It was great, and people were excited. It just unfailingly good reviews for Kathy.
Yeah.
Excited to. I did have someone ask me, right in front of the two doctors, which of them she should choose. I'm like, well. I said, I think either of them would be a very good choice.
That's your schedule, an appointment with both of them.
Doctor Haberly goes, that wasn't awkward at all. Yeah.
There, there were patients, there were people that came and wanted to talk to the doctors because they wanted to figure out who they could go to.
Right, yeah, and that was great for them to both.
They need to have a doctor open house.
Oh, I think that would be good, actually.
It would be really good. It was, they were people definitely waiting to just meet them there too, so.
Well, that's, that's exciting that they want to give, give Newcastle a chance again, maybe.
Yep, yep.
So what I thought was interesting was Ronald had a good observation about the sales aspect.
Yes.
And, and it's like, we've got to we have to win people.
Win some of the community.
One at a time, and I think if we have enough time, we can.
Well, I think that I agree with you, and we had started talking about doing like a positive thing, highlight the radiology, highlight the lab, highlight. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and Shannon told me that people come into the ED, so I've had several people tell me about bad experiences they've had maybe a long time ago, and they will not come back, will not, no way would they ever do that, but then they're forced to come back.
Because, absolutely.
And that it's not uncommon for them, and I guess it takes a long time. Um, thankfully, I've never had that experience yet. I'm sure I will, haven't yet. That after how, that long encounter, they're like, oh. They're like, oh, this place, like, you know, you've changed our mind about this place. And so I'm convinced if we have enough time, we have enough wonderful people here and we can win people back. And and then what he was saying about returning customers is is right about that.
Yeah.
Yep, you can get them and keep them and you know.
He hit that.
Well, he's a salesman. I don't know if he knows that.
Well, right, and that, maybe that's obvious, but.
See, that they, you didn't have bad candidates at all, so.
I think, so I think we should just go around the room and kind of tell, kind of talk about what we're where you're landing, and I wouldn't say we have to give a definite, um, a definite but let's kind of say your first couple of choices. How does that sound? Does that sound like a good one? Sure.
Kind of start a sound like.
Yes, do you want to start?
Speaking of having to start, you don't always start.
I always start because I, I open up my mouth once in a while, at the wrong time. I'm going to give you I thought, first of all, I won't argue against anybody because all of them are good. All of them had some real pluses. Uh, I, the first, Ronald, I was impressed with him, uh partly his medical background. Uh, he has some board experience. Uh, Norma, I, I, I've known her for a long time. Uh, she has done a lot of volunteer work, and uh she's been on the board before. Uh, I think quite frankly, she was pretty upfront. William, uh, I like William's sense of humor, always have. I've always liked to argue with William. Because William is the type, he makes a great attorney because no matter what side you want to take, he's ready to take the other side, whether he believes in it or not, just for the arg, uh sense of the argument.
Our meetings will double in length. I'm just saying, you and William.
But if I can say, William, I I'm worried about two attorneys. Wait, wait, okay, what attorney do you, wait, listen to the hospital attorney or wait?
Ask him what he thought about that, but.
You know, and William is, I'm not saying any, William's opinion is wrong. I'm not, I'm not inferring that because he has a a degree too. But also, at the same time, I don't want to get in a situation that
Have to choose between.
Maybe have to choose between the, you can't put two cowboys in a room to get along for long. How are you gonna put two attorneys in a room to get along? You know, on everything. Don't, I just don't. I may interest somebody else.
Yeah, so what about you, Mary? What are you, would you need to say what you think?
Well, feels like we're going back to the nominations that we did the other day.
Yes, it is.
I, it's gonna be that way.
Just pass for right now, get ready. Um, I kind of like Benjamin. He has a master's, uh MBA. He's been a compliance director.
Yeah.
I call him, he's a respiratory therapist. Um, the sales thing. Norma's been on, I'm just saying what Ted said, but Norma has been on the board before. I think she's got the pulse of Newcastle pretty much. She's got her thumb on that pretty much, and I think people probably tell her things, and she's not afraid to speak up and tell us. I think she really cares about the facility, and maybe if she was on the board, there might be a better uh interaction between the board and the foundation. I don't know, since she's served on both. I don't know. But they were all good. I don't want to make the decision. So that's just, and those are, and those are probably were.
I do know, I do know Norma has got tact, but at the same time, she'll say what she's thinking. That's.
Those are my top three.
So, my top three in no particular order are Benjamin, Leonard, and Norma. Um, slightly different things about all of them, but Leonard comes with a lot of community. You know, as the president of the bank, you talk to a lot of people, and he also has a lot of financial knowledge, obviously. Um, and I like I, I liked a lot of the things that Benjamin said. I think he has a lot to offer. He's, um yeah, and Norma, the things she said, yes, she's, I do think lots of people talk to her. She definitely will be a very opinionated board member, but that's.
Another strong person.
Yes, absolutely, but she's, I mean, she, there probably is, I mean, she cares very much about this place. And so that's, yeah. I would say those are my
Yeah, what about you, Nathan?
Well, I did agree with your list.
Yeah. So is that Leonard?
Norma.
Norma.
I, I kind of evaluate everybody on two criteria. Do they represent the community? And do they have useful skills?
So you do Benjamin as well, too?
Uh, he said Ben, Leonard.
Ben, Benjamin, and Leonard.
Yeah, that's what I got, okay.
And so, um so Leonard is the only one that has useful skills and probably represents the community. Norma represents the community, but doesn't quite have the same useful skills, and certainly has useful skills, but he is a newer member of the community. Although he does have a good energy and good feel about him. So, I mean, for me, I, I'd probably kind of toggle between Ben and Leonard, maybe, but I, I, I think they're pretty good choices.
Something that I kind of maybe overlooked, but Benjamin does have a, a good.
He's got a good positive.
Positive, yes.
Feel around it, whatever you call that.
It's the, yeah, the feeling.
The meat.
His, yeah.
Manner or.
You can see him going out in the community and carrying the message.
Absolutely.
And so that was a third criteria I came up with is And so that was a third criteria I came up with, is.
Who can be an ambassador?
My goal is to win people back, one at a time. It breaks my heart every time I hear somebody's story about, we went in and we saw this traveling Russian doctor person, and they didn't take good care of my husband, and he's had a problem for twenty years, and these sorts. It just breaks, it just breaks your heart, and maybe, you know, it's not quite accurate, but, um.
It takes a long time for that impression to get out.
They have to have another experience.
Right.
They do, but they may have told somebody, well, I ain't gonna go without a hospital, I'll drive to later, I'll drive. And, and what you were talking about with the negativity, if you make one person disappointed, that spreads like wildfire, basically, kind of like a, an untruthal thing. So I, I'm thinking, you know, if you want somebody who's gonna be a great community ambassador, that's really gonna give people a good, positive feel, you know, I kind of felt that the most with Ben. But Leonard is a very charming person as well.
But it's a little bit at a disadvantage to have to do it on Zoom tonight, but yeah.
So.
You didn't want anybody to get sick, so.
Yeah, which was thoughtful of him, for sure. So what about you?
Should we go with Carrie first or you?
I thought we were just going around the table.
We are almost.
So I had an affinity for the three people who chose to put their names into this mix when it was a mess.
Okay.
So that would be Henry, William, and Ben. Because even when the chips are down, they said, I'm up for the challenge, and I'll try and make it better. Um, and then they now came back for a second shot. So those three got brownie points for me. But when I listened to all of what, it sounds like we're kind of coalescing around Ben, and I think that he would be a great choice because I think he has a, he has the most positive energy. And he brings a lot of skills to this board.
We do.
So I, he's kind of moved to the top of my heap, though I always haven't, I just love William as a person.
He's definitely a funny guy.
I'd like to argue too, right?
It's just that we're, we're kindred Vermonters. Yeah. Yeah, it was hard tonight, I, I agree with you that our meetings would be fifteen hours long. He really does have a brilliant mind, he really does. And, um, Henry brings a lot to the table, too. Doesn't have the community carry the message thing as much, I think, as Ben, so.
Now, Ann, you have to vote, I've already got, figured out where you guys are at with these three.
My, 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 um, my three were, was Ben, Leonard, and William.
Ben, Leonard, and who?
And William. And, um, and it, it might.
It's Ben.
The, um.
Six.
I like, I like, like what you guys were saying with Ben, with his, um, how he feels, but I also like the fact he has an MBA.
Yeah, for sure.
I like that.
He's got medical background, but business background, he's.
Organizational experience.
And, and Leonard, I, he's been in the community forty-one years. And, and he has the business background.
He does.
And, and, and William, the trouble is, is he's just always been a wonderful friend to me, and so, it's.
Well, here's the good news, you vote, every, between all of you, you voted for everybody, so everybody got a vote. So, I mean, you know what I'm trying to say?
Yep.
Yeah, but the person that won out is Benjamin.
I, I agree.
Unless you have some reason to argue it.
Yeah, listening to what everybody said.
I agree, I did.
Do you, he wasn't, I think you were the only one that he wasn't on your list, so.
Yes, I thought Ronald had more medical background. Uh, a lot more years of medical background.
Ben has, Ben was a medic.
He was, he was a medic in there.
He was a medic in the military.
Ronald was a salesman.
Yeah.
And about thirteen years in the medical community. You know, and I, I find it difficult because of Leonard's forty-one years and Norma's lifetime being.
I know, and I mean, both of them are, yeah.
Well, Norma was second, so.
So I, I'm not asking anybody to change or, or to change anything, I just, you know, okay, what do you weigh in your mind?
Yeah.
And that's one of the reasons that, that I think Leonard would, because he has both money and the, in the, the.
Com- community. Yeah.
But Ben feels right. I, I can't put quite into words.
Yeah, his positive, you know, if we're going off the, off the juju thingy, like he does feel, I don't know, he feels like he would fit, he feels like he would be, I don't know. It's hard because it is hard, if you had, you know, four that were clunkers, you'd be like, oh.
They were all really good.
But they're not, yeah. They're all very worthwhile.
Now you just need to do your vote for who you're going to appoint. And the vote's there already, so it's just whether you're gonna disagree with yourselves.
I could sit here and argue this all night.
Come on, people, you voted.
I could argue with this all, all night myself.
Sure.
You know, what's more important?
Can I make a motion that we offer the board position to Ben Roberts?
I second it.
Try to make the motion.
She seconded, Mary seconded.
Mary sec, yeah.
You don't.
So any more discussion? Well, I, what I feel bad about, I mean, I'm. I don't want to leave you in the dust, like, you know what I mean?
No, don't worry, you're not leaving me at all. Hey, I believe, I believe the rule of the board. I'm not upset over any, you know, decision that.
The truth is that they were, he was on every one of ours except yours, and that, I don't like that.
Isn't it always interesting how everybody's different perspectives? It's so cool when you cover less around one person.
Yeah.
It doesn't bother me.
Are you comfortable with him, Ted?
I will be comfortable, yes. I, I did like his, Nathan brought it up, I think, first, but I did enjoy his outgoing personality, warmth. I don't know how to describe what I felt with his personality.
Genuineness, maybe.
Um, genuine, maybe, and warm, I felt, you know, okay, all right. No, I'm not upset, I, I believe in the board rule, so. And this is not something that I get upset over.
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't expect you to, but, but I still, anyway, that's just.
No, no, you're not hurting me.
It's just me.
No, no, no.
I'm glad for the total, you guys didn't finish your votes.
Yes, well, she's. So all those, um, so do we, you made the motion to offer Ben. Like, all those, you seconded it, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same. Good job.
I do like what you said about, he ran also before, and still, you know, sometimes when you run for something and you don't get it, then you're like, wow, you know what I mean? And so the people that came back and said, I would still serve, I think there's, you gotta acknowledge that that's, you know.
And it's, it's not easy to jump in, but it's easier to jump in when it's calm. It's not so easy to do.
I agree, the controversy.
So you have to give them credit.
That was happening at that time.
That they were willing.
Yeah, that they were willing to stand up and say, well.
That's the case, I mean, well, there is.
That was a whole different perspective, I didn't think about those guys running before.
Yeah, those three had all.
That's what, that's like the first thing. Jumped out.
Yeah.
Well, with that, do you want to, do you have any other business?
Okay.
Um, so.
Well, that was actually.
So probably I should get every school number, so I can call them to.
Okay. Um, well, you, we have the folder there of the people, the phone numbers in there.
Okay. I don't think so. Do you have anything for exec, really? We don't have anything for exec, do we?
No, we have nothing for executive.
Can we have like a one minute executive?
Yeah.
Pretty sure it's our first meeting without exec.
One minute executive session, so.
We're almost, yeah, we gotta turn that off.
Can you make a move to make a, make a move, people? Make a motion.
Make a motion, somebody move. What am I moving?
To go into executive session.
Oh, she has something in exec?
Yeah.
Oh.
Can I make a motion that we go into executive session, um, under session sixteen dash four dash four oh five AII to consider the employment of a professional person or employee, and I, I, I on matters concerning litigation or potential litigation? I don't think we need I, 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 I.
Okay, sounds good. So.
Okay, I'll, I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same. Executive at ten till ten, or.
Nine fifty?
Nine fifty.
I'm here and taking minutes, just so you know.
I promise it will just be one minute.
Okay, add a room. And then I'm going to take a sign. Okay, I'm gonna move to room two. Okay, then, back here in this one, here. I have to make sure I can do this.
Mary, Mary, are you still here, there, can you hear me?
She's muted, so she can't answer, even if she does.
Well, what I, Mary, I just was thinking, it would be nice if, before you say anything paper wise or in public, if you let me call all the, give me some time tomorrow morning to call all those people.
She can't answer you because she's.
I know.
Yeah, there we go, unmute her, there we go.
And then I have to go to her room.
And she might not be there. She might not be there, she does her recording.
She's probably not in the room, so I, we can ask her not to announce it before we do.
Yeah, but we need to make sure she's not, can't hear the executive session.
Right, yeah, absolutely. Was wanting to catch her.
Actually got pretty lucky, I think.
Okay, we're, we're up in room.
For public, so we can discuss.
Sorry to be in trouble.
Okay. No, it's fine, it's fine, it's fine. Okay, you're right. What I don't understand is why this.
I got excited.
Like, could you put her in the waiting room?
I know. Yeah.
It's a crazy thought. What does it say that? For another day, give your hopes for another day. All right.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
So the reason why I.
Hold on, let's shut off the recording.